Superintendent Blatt, if you would, please introduce your staff.
Yes, good morning. I'm Deputy White. If you'll start introductions of our staff.
Good morning. We're excited to start today's board meeting with the swearing in of our First Lady, Kathy Justice, by Judge Stephanie Abraham.
Ready? Raise your right hand, please. I, Kathy L. Justice.
I, Kathy L. Justice.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of a member of the West Virginia Board of Education.
Of the office of a member of the State Board of Education.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Kristi, the board would like to do a picture right before we get started. Show your two seats.
Mrs. Justice, First Lady, it is a pleasure to welcome you this morning to join the board. The Governor made an excellent choice because if anyone is more committed to the children of West Virginia, I don't think there is. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the West Virginia Board of Education for November 13th, 2024. It is my pleasure to welcome everyone and our first item is a Pledge of Allegiance, and it will be led by Mrs. Justice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are introductions and we will begin with the board member, Mr. Wolf.
That was a grand shrunk railroad concert. For you older folks.
Better now? Yes, much better. Shall we do introductions again or are we okay? Superintendent Blatt, if you would, please introduce your staff.
Yes, good morning. I'm Deputy White. If you'll start introductions of our staff.
Good morning. Sonia White, Deputy State Superintendent.
Good morning. Amon Gilliam, Director, ESEA Programs and School Improvement.
Good morning. Kelly Masonopel, Coordinator, ESEA Programs and School Improvement.
Good morning. Mike Willough, Director of School Facilities.
Jeff Kelly, Assistant Superintendent of Accountability.
Curtis Green's Attorney.
Kristi Day, Director of Communications.
Tina Payne, Board Secretary.
Kelly Talbot, General Counsel.
Mark Moore, Office of Communications.
Thank you all very much. Before we call for the approval of the agenda, I do have some announcements to make and a few revisions. On the consent agenda, item number nine, the West Virginia SSAC Series Three rule has been removed from today's agenda. Under New Business, item F, the update on the Martinsburg North Middle School intervention has been moved to the top of New Business. And also, under New Business, item G, the school safety and security report has been removed from the agenda to allow our members more time to review it. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the amended agenda.
It's moved by Mr. Hardesty and seconded by Dr. Stansberry. Is there any discussion? Questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda are recognitions. Ms. Day.
Good morning. Good morning. We are pleased today to recognize our national... Hello? Testing? All right. We are pleased today to have our National Blue Ribbon Schools from 2023-24, and so we will introduce them by county and we will take a picture with them individually, so we won't have all of the schools up at the same time. We're going to start with Jackson County. Superintendent Wohasafluq and Principal Jenny Knopf from Gilmore Elementary School, so we ask them to come up to the podium, please.
Good morning. This is Stacy Storm. She's my first grade ECAT, so I want to make sure that I got her mentioned too. Gracious. This is my 11th year at Gilmore. And we've always said we're the hidden gem in Jackson County. Like, kind of a very rural school and we're a small school and our numbers have fluctuated through the years. My daughter, who's a freshman in college, when she was there as a fifth grader, we had about 245 students. We're about 100 less than that now. And of course, during COVID, the number's up and down. But the one thing that has remained the same is the dedication of the staff. We have the best kids. We just do. They're different. We have wonderful families. We have a supportive community. Like, we're really the hub of our community. The 4-H groups meet there and the youth sports use our gem. And like tonight, we have our interest fair, which brings people from everywhere to just showcase what we do in our area. And, you know, academics are what got us recognized, but academics don't happen in isolation. It's the relationships that we have in the building. It's the fact that our students know when they walk in every day that they are loved and they are safe and that we are going to do our best by them every day. It's the fact that we are a generational school. Most of our students, Mrs. Storm, as a matter of fact, went there all the way through eighth grade and she's back now. The majority of our teachers' own children have gone through Gilmore. You know, we just have a definite vested interest in what we're doing there. You know, I like to tell the families that we aren't...that any decision that we make in our building are the decisions that we would make for our own children. And, you know, that's really important. The trust in those relationships are what make Gilmore what it is and allow us to have the level of success that we've reached.
Congratulations. That is so exceptional and I'm sure that you all are so proud that you'll be able to display that banner for everyone in the community. Superintendent Wohasafluq, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I never deny a chance to get away from a microphone, believe me. No, I couldn't be more proud of Gilmore Elementary. At Jackson County, we're small, but I'm very blessed. Each and every day, I tell people all the time, I go to school and I never go to work. And I absolutely love it. I love Jackson County. I love the state of West Virginia, as well as my colleagues in Marion County, as well as, excuse me, Wayne County with Kellogg Elementary and Pleasant Valley Elementary. The Blue Ribbon started in 1982 and through the Department of Education. And to be recognized as one of three schools in West Virginia is truly an honor. At Gilmore, out of those three schools, there are 356 other schools throughout the nation that were recognized. Out of 115,000 schools in the United States of America. So a great honor to Dr. Heston and the School of Pleasant Valley, as well as Mr. Alexander in Kellogg Elementary in Wayne County. Cannot be more proud of West Virginia.
Thank you. We join you in that pride. Any other board members have any comments? Questions? Anyone? All right. We'll join you for some pictures here in the center.
In a sec. Right now or...
We're in motion. Come on. Yeah, let's come on. We're just in motion. We'll go ahead and we'll do it. We'll do it. We'll get everybody together.
Okay. Thank you.[1789.81][1789.81][laughing]
I want more pictures.
Okay, board stand please. County, left seat. White County please. Thank you.
Same deal. One, two, three. And up here. One, two, three.
Okay, thank you. County, Wayne, and we have Marion.
My mistake, folks. Sorry.
You're good.
Individual.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. Last but not least, very good. All right, one, two, three. And again, up here. One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Board members.
Can we move?
Yes. You are dismissed.
Aye.
And you can come right to the podium?
You're gonna laugh. There are times when I...
And next, we have Pleasant Valley Elementary School from Marion County, represented by Principal Christopher Bonato and Superintendent Dr. Donna Heston.
Good morning. I'm Chris Bonato. This is my second year as the principal at Pleasant Valley Elementary School, and it's an honor and privilege to be here to talk about our school. And it's my personal belief for a school to succeed and have high academics, it really comes down to a foundation of three core things, and that's passionate teachers, motivated students, and dedicated parents. That's definitely what we have at our school. When we look at our teachers, they're passionate. They love our kids. They love their profession, and they really focus on building the relationships with those students, because that's the most important. They get to know each student individually, understand their strengths, their weaknesses, and then that translates into the classroom. And it's much more than that with the relationships. It's getting to know their interests and share with successes outside the classroom. I have children who are elementary age who are involved in athletics, and I can't tell you how many times I'm out in the community at athletic events and I run into our staff, and that's them giving up their own evenings, their own weekends, time away from their own family to be there, to sharing the success with their students. And the students see that and they respect that, and to our students, our teachers are their superheroes, and that translates so much in the classroom. So we're definitely blessed with our staff, and they just cultivate a climate of positivity, and we have low turnover at our school. Once students...once teachers get hired at our school, they stay there. I'd like to give a shout out to our kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Dobalski, who's been an educator for 46 years, and 42 of them have been at Pleasant Valley. So that's just really a reflection of the culture that they've cultivated. And then our students, they're so motivated. They're little sponges. And we do have high expectations, but they meet those expectations. When they walk through our front door, there's a sign that says "Believe in Greatness," and that's the motto that we started last year. And I truly believe every single day in every single classroom, there's great things that are going on, and that's a reflection of our students' hard work. Last year, at the beginning of the year, I read diagnostic, we had 19% of students on grade level in math. At the end of the year, it was 80%. In reading, to start the year, we were at 34%. At the end of the year, it was 86%. So that goes...that's a reflection of their hard work. It's not just that they're showing up and we have an awesome climate and culture, but it really is the hard work of the students. And then our parents, dedicated parents. We have a problem at Pleasant Valley with parents, but it's that we can't meet the demands of how involved they want to be. Our PTO is extremely active, and though he's put the needs of our students first. Last year, they did a fundraiser, a fun run where they raised over $30,000, that we can allocate that to help our students. They're involved in our LSIC, our campus cleanup. Once a month, they're there for campus beautification and different projects. So we're definitely blessed to have that. And I'm in a unique situation where I'm also in the West Virginia Army National Guard, and in the last year, I was gone for six months, from March to September. And for most principals, that would cause anxiety and distress, especially without having an assistant principal. But really, I didn't experience it. I was at ease because I know that we have the passionate teachers and the motivated students and the dedicated parents. So I can't say enough about our school, and I feel blessed to be there.
Certainly, to echo Mr. Bonato, Principal Bonato's words, it is an absolute reflection of the work of the students, of the staff at Pleasant Valley, as well as the community. And I know that he will say it as well as I will say it. We see great results in the state of West Virginia and in Marion County and in all of our counties. You get national blue ribbon schools when you see the involvement and the support of the community, leadership like this, staff like this, parents and students like this. It is not just student achievement that drives it. It is relationships. It is support of public education. And it was an absolute honor to be able to sit in that room in Washington DC last week and see West Virginia have a distinction of three schools that are nationally recognized out of a pool, as Mr. Wuhasafluq said, of so many throughout the country. And it is just a small tidbit, a snapshot of the great work that we do in West Virginia every day, and certainly a testament to our public educators, our parents that choose public education, as well as our leaders. So thank you for recognizing the great work of them today, and thank you for the work that you do in supporting us.
Congratulations.
Last but not least, we have Kellogg Elementary School from Wayne County, represented by Josh Sammons, who's Assistant Principal, representing Principal Julie Hutchinson, who could not be with us, and Superintendent Todd Alexander.
My name is Josh Sammons. I'm the Assistant Principal. This is Ms. Amanda Lusher. She's our faculty president, and Mr. Alexander is our superintendent. What's different about Kellogg maybe than other blue ribbon schools is we are a Title I school. We consistently outperform state averages. That's a testament to our staff. We do have a good community as well, but our staff, just like you guys, once they get there, they stay. And it's a veteran staff. The biggest thing, I think, that got us into the blue ribbon status is our achievement across all levels. Our special ed department and interventionists work well with our general education teachers. They plan together. Our general ed teachers plan daily together, but our special ed department teaches the same lessons as our regular ed teachers do. Now, they modify, obviously, but you'll consistently see our special ed scores outpacing the other schools in the state. And that's really what God's recognized, but it's the ability of people within the culture of the school to work together. It's excellent. They don't leave. They work very well together. Our attendance rate is also a solid rate. We have a 94% attendance rate currently, and it tends to stay close to that at the end of the year. Again, that's a testament to our staff and the community. But Kellogg's a great school. We hope to continue to consistently be outpacing the state averages and, of course, our districts as well. But it's a wonderful school, and I'm proud to be there. This is my third year there. Previously, I was at Spring Valley High School, so it's a little bit of a change, but I love the elementary level, and it's a great staff at Kellogg.
Just to tell you a little bit about Kellogg. Kellogg has not always been Title I. Kellogg lies in the west end of Huntington, and over the years, the level of poverty that the school has to deal with has changed significantly. Not only have they moved into our Title I rankings, but they are well up in our Title I rankings in the county. What has not changed at the school is the expectations from the staff. They are consistently high performing. I went back and looked, as far as 2009, those test scores have consistently remained up, and it's because we have a staff there that has high expectations for the students. And I think that you heard in all three cases here with these National Blue Ribbon Schools, it's high expectations by the staff that are really setting the tone. So we're very proud of Kellogg Elementary. They are a model for Wayne County. They are a model for the rest of the state, as well as the other two schools you've recognized here this evening. So thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Congratulations again. You make us proud. Congratulations to your students particularly. Next item on the agenda is delegations. Ms. Day.
Good morning again. President White, Vice President Vic Gabriel, and members of the board. We have quite a few...we have quite a few delegations today, as you know, so we'll get started. They will have three minutes each. They will have three minutes each to present to the board. The first one is Tara Ramo. She's a Charleston resident speaking on the topic of truth.
Thank you. The Book of Isaiah, Chapter 45, selected verses circa 700 to 680 B.C. "I am the Lord, and there is no other. Besides me, there is no God. I equip you, though you do not know me; that people may know from the rising of the sun and from the west, that there is none besides me. I am the Lord, and there is no other. I form light and create darkness. I make well-being and create calamity. I am the Lord who does all these things. Shower, O heavens, from above, and let the clouds rain down righteousness. Let the earth open, that salvation and righteousness may bear fruit. Let the earth cause them both to sprout. I, the Lord, have created it. I made the earth and created man on it. It was my hands that stretched out the heavens, and I commanded all their host. I have stirred him up in righteousness, and I will make all his ways level. He shall build my city and set my exiles free, not for price or reward, says the Lord of hosts. For thus, says the Lord who created the heavens, he is God, who formed the earth and made it; he established it. He did not create it empty. He formed it to be inhabited. I am the Lord, and there is no other. I, the Lord, speak the truth. I declare what is right, and there is no other God besides me. A righteous God and a Savior, there is none besides me. Turn to me and be saved, all the ends of the earth; for I am God, and there is no other. By myself I have sworn, from my mouth has gone out in righteousness, a word that shall not return. To me every knee shall bow, every tongue shall swear allegiance. Sole Deo Gloria."
Our next delegation is David Gluckowski with West Virginia Professional Educators regarding teacher concerns.
Good morning. Today, I'm going to continue my presentation on the components needed to uplift the teaching profession in West Virginia. Revisions to these components are urgently needed to achieve the following: that is, to attract qualified teachers to meet the ever-changing needs of our students, equip and support our teachers to successfully resolve our escalating student discipline issues, help solve teacher and substitute teacher shortages, encourage experienced educators to pursue leadership and administrative positions, and attract more of just those right kind of people to take such greatly needed positions, such as principals, counselors, social workers, and school psychologists, and to justly compensate our educators in all these positions for the important work that they do every day. Our annual membership survey is currently open to our members, and we are receiving daily feedback. This important feedback will direct our association in formulating our 2025 legislative goals, which we will present in January. So here is a sampling of comments we've received so far. So here we go. "There is a damaging and possibly dangerous emphasis on keeping disruptive students in the classroom, no matter the behavior problem, including violence, to bolster attendance, no matter the effect on the learning of the well-behaved students." Here's another one. "Students who have out-of-control behaviors in elementary school need to be addressed. Students in elementary school kick, bite, and hit teachers and aides, throw tables, throw pencils, books, iPads, knock down computers on purpose, and nothing is done. Nothing." Another one. "Each county needs more alternative schools for disruptive students. Student behavior at my school, under our principal, is out of control. It is very rare that I am not hit, kicked, slapped, or bit in a day. My kids rarely do work because behaviors have taken up the majority of our day. I am given no support from my administration. I am actually being blamed. Parents need to somehow be held accountable for student success." And here's about three more. "Cell phones. I think that most students are more responsible with phones than in the past, but I still support the ban. We need to do our best to combat the addiction that goes with cell phones and social media. A lack of support from lawmakers and the spending of public money in private institutions is making my job as a public school educator a lot more difficult. Classroom teachers are getting more responsibilities without being properly compensated. Please fix PEIA without passing the cost on to public employees and their spouses. Why are we being punished with less take-home pay because of the PEIA fiasco? Public education in West Virginia requires more, not less, support in word, deed, and financial backing from the West Virginia Legislature. These jobs are growing in complexity, demand, and difficulty, with less support and resources as each year goes by. Please help us." So in closing, based on our members' comments, components that need serious attention are the proper management of student discipline, reducing student absenteeism, lowering class sizes, allowing for reasonable special ed caseloads, establishing the student cellphone policy, justly compensate our educators, and provide affordable health care. And this isn't everything. There is more to present, so stay tuned. West Virginia Professional Educators will continue to pursue all of this and more in the coming legislative session and with this board and the Department of Education. And we thank you all for your time, for working with us, and we're glad to work with you on all of these issues. So thank you very much.
Our next delegation is Miki Blackwell with West Virginia Principals Association.
Good morning, everyone. Madam President, Madam Superintendent, Board Members, First Lady Justice. It is great to see you with us today. She has been a friend of our organization for many, many years, and we are proud to have her with us today. I would just like to say, in the short amount of time that we have, that we are on a precipice here with public schools. You've heard the issues that Mr. Gluckowski has brought forward. There are many others. If you just read the paper, you see that we don't have enough money to properly make our schools safe for everyone. What a terrible thing it would be if we spent money on a charter school instead of making our current schools safe. What a terrible thing it would be if we took money from other sources, from school sources, and didn't make our schools safe for our students. We have a wonderful record of safety in West Virginia public schools. We need to make sure that we are working with the legislature to ensure... We need to make sure that we are working with the legislature to ensure such a thing. I believe I heard here once that we had 32 or 26 schools that had well water. Well, my grandparents had well water and they were both born before the 1900s. We need to make sure that we are taking care of our schools and we need to make sure that we are properly manning our schools. Mr. Glodowski is right when he says that there are problems with discipline. And I am right also when I say that we're not properly staffed with a full-time principal in every school, a full-time assistant, and a full-time counselor. We need to make sure that we are doing everything we can on our end to make things better for everyone in the school building, students, staff, and administrators. And as this legislature comes forward, and I know some of those folks are listening, we need to dedicate ourselves to these issues. First and foremost is the safety and health and welfare of our children. Physical health, emotional health, mental health. And we need to do everything we can to support them. So while there are many great causes, the most important cause is safety because if you don't have a safe school, you can't have a good school. We had three excellent principals here today. We have excellent principals all across this state and we need to make sure that we are taking care of all of those folks and make sure that we are taking care of all those students through support. Last time I was here, I gave you a homework assignment and I said, "Go visit a school." Now, I'm not going to ask you to raise your hand and say who was there and who wasn't. But anyone who visited a school in the past month, I want to say that I appreciate it. And I want to invite you to go back again this month, go the day before Thanksgiving, see what challenges exist there. I want to invite you all to our Principals Conference at the Greenbrier, December 8th through the 10th. President White has the information. Superintendent Blatt has the information. And we look forward to having everyone there. You're all invited. We've got a free reception. And on Sunday night, hopefully, the First Lady will be talking about community in schools on the first night. She's been with us every year but the year she got a new granddaughter, I believe. And on occasion, her narrative well husband will show up also. So we look forward and we invite you all. Now, I said I was going to run a little long and I asked some permission from a couple of board members and I didn't ask from the folks who would have said no. Because I want to take a moment or two to say thank you to the President of the West Virginia American Federation of Teachers, Mr. Fred Albert. I'm sure he may announce it today, but I know I'm jumping the gun on him and he'll fuss at me as soon as I sit down. But today is Mr. Albert's last official board meeting. Now, he may come for fun after this. I see Dr. Snavely missed us today. But Mr. Albert and I have been friends for 40 years and we have known each other through a variety of settings. We're both graduates of West Virginia State. He and another student used to sit on each side of me when I attended class to make sure that I didn't cause trouble. And he's been making sure that teachers haven't been causing trouble or the good kind of trouble ever since. He is the kindest person I know. And my mother, when I said that I was going up today, she said, "Don't talk about the election." And I said, "Okay." My mom's 87. She said, "Say something good about Fred." And she knows Fred because my mother was a school secretary for 27 years. She's 87 now and she still remembers Mr. Albert when he first started teaching. And he was an excellent teacher then and he's doing an excellent job of representing teachers now. And we'll miss him. We'll miss him a lot. I'll have him here as a friend, but we'll miss him here as a friend now. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Albert. We used to sit in the back of the room in that class and no one would have ever walked in and said, "That guy's going to make something of himself someday." But that guy beside him is. And they were talking about Fred and he's been on the front page of the New York Times and he has spoken at every occasion and he goes to all the things that I miss and I can always call him and say what happened. And he's that way with teachers, he's that way with administrators, and he's that way with staff. And we're going to miss him. My mom loves him. I love him. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Albert. Let's give him a hand. Thank you.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect that Mickey has used his allotted time for December, January, and February.
Duly noted. Thank you, Mr. Hardesty.
Our next delegation is C. Bryant Dottery with Teachers for Students and Better Public Schools. His topic is teacher retention and recruitment during the ongoing nationwide teacher shortage.
Good morning. I'm a native of West Virginia and been a teacher for almost 20 years. Just returned to West Virginia, was teaching over in DC at a charter school. I'm glad to be back. And I've paid attention to what's been going on here and advocating on Capitol Hill about the teacher shortage, 200,000. I know you guys know the numbers. And West Virginia having a hard time competing against Maryland and Virginia. DC's salary is now, the base salary or the lowest salary is 67,000 a year. Maryland's expected to send theirs to 60,000 in 2026. I'm sure Virginia will follow. And 62% of parents, according to the Teacher Salary Project, 62% of parents are discouraging and dissuading their kids from considering becoming teachers. And the number one reason for that is teacher salaries. Now, I know this body, that salary is in your purview. But I come to you with one basic idea that I think it does fall within your purview, which is teachers need time. If you can't pay them, and I'm hoping the state legislature will make those movements on that, but for your sake, we need to find ways to give teachers time. Cannot keep asking teachers to do more and more, take on more obligations, and rarely have ever, including during COVID, when more was expected of teachers, very rarely was there a conversation where, because you're taking on more, we'll take this off your plate. That conversation almost never happens. And that's, and we wonder why teachers get burned out, we wonder why teachers leave. That's one of the main reasons. And so I'm asking you to propose what I call LTA days, 10, one per month, each school year. LTA, leave teachers alone. No professional development, no meetings where teachers have time to lesson plan, time to assess how their students are doing, to make phone calls, to do all the basic things that they have to do to be prepared when they walk in front of their classrooms. Something so simple, but yet not something that we seem to think about, but teachers need time. That's the most invaluable thing that they could use to be a better educator, so they can be better informed and process everything that they're going through, process everything that they do, and consider what they need to do next. I don't know if you realize how much of a morale booster that would be for one day a month where teachers can take an hour and go to lunch with their friends and then have the rest of the day to work on all the things they need to do to be a better teacher in their classroom. And so that's all I wanted to tell you today, is propose those 10 LTA days. Leave teachers alone. Give them time to do the job that you want them to do. You keep asking more and you need to figure out how to ask less so they can do the things that they are meant to do when they walk in front of their students. Thank you.
Mr. Brooks Cox, if you'll make your way to the podium. He's a grandparent and he is speaking on the issue of closing of East Bank Middle School, Bell Elementary, Midland Trail, Malden Elementary, and Mary Ingalls.
All right. Today, I'm representing all five schools. And I am a staff member at East Bank Middle. My primary focus today will be on the bus schedules. During each of the five hearings regarding Kanawha County schools, Dr. Williams had a completely different explanation as to why the bus schedules were in fact grossly misrepresented. And now we see that Dr. Williams has indeed submitted a proposal for your all's consideration that has been altered in that regard. With said changes, proposals that were in fact not posted for public review prior to the respective public hearings, there were also not actual proposals on record when the corresponding public hearings were conducted and the ultimate votes to close were taken by KCS Board. In short, the attachments submitted by KCS for this meeting have been materially altered by KCS and are not the same proposals they used prior to and the day of their votes. I'm not sure of the legal issues in this regard, but depending upon today's outcome might be something that needs to be decided at another venue. It seems that perhaps KCS is acknowledging how grossly they originally misrepresented the bus schedules and since being publicly outed, have attempted to make them a little more palatable. They failed. Before reviewing actual routes, let me share that my numbers come straight from the KCS Bus Garage, from the KCS computer program, and corroborated by the bus drivers of said routes. I'll add here that Dr. Williams first stated that their Director of Transportation calculated the routes by GPSing them. At another meeting, Dr. Williams stated that Dr. Potter had ridden a route to confirm, stated that was within two or three minutes of their proposal. These are all quotes. Why GPS or ride routes when immediately need to print off the schedules? Perhaps there was something more nefarious there. Ultimately, in a desperate attempt to discredit our facts at the fourth school hearing, Dr. Williams stated that the software was outdated. I'll share two routes from the East Bank Middle School. The Paint Creek Route starts at Burnwell at 6:10 a.m., makes 34 stops, and arrives at East Bank at 7:25. That's 1 hour 15 minutes. Add the 17 minutes it will take to get to Dupont and you have 1 hour 32 minutes. KCS shows this at 47 minutes. That's almost double. And worse, let's also look at the Cabin Creek Route. It starts at 1928 Dakota Road in Esthale at 6:06 a.m., makes 33 stops, and arrives at East Bank at 7:35. A total of 1 hour 29 minutes. Next year, this bus won't have to go all the way to East Bank, so we'll only need to add nine minutes to Dupont, making it 1 hour and 38 minutes. KCS shows this in their proposal at 30 minutes. That's triple the time. Many other routes of these five schools are proportionally misrepresented. Dr. Williams was asked what they do if the routes exceed the 45-minute state guidelines. He merely stated, "We can just get a waiver for that." Dr. Williams has further added that new software will allow them to look at rerouting KCS routes. Folks, you cannot reroute Paint Creek, Cabin Creek, Campbell's Creek, Wichita Hall or Little Creek, or virtually the entire eastern Kanawha County. The KCS Board through Dr. Williams has employed smoke and mirrors in an attempt to pull the wool over our eyes and more importantly, yours. As educators, we strive daily to provide the type of leadership we hope to instill in our students, simple things like honor and integrity. Let's show them those attributes still exist. We encourage you to stop the madness. Our kids are not just a bus waiver. Thank you.
Christina Williams, will you please make your way to the podium? Christina Williams is from East Bank Middle School to speak on the closure of East Bank Middle School. Christina Williams? No? All right, moving on. Tressa Howell, please make your way to the podium. She's an area resident, speaking on the issue of closure of East Bank Middle, Midland Trail, Bell, Malden, and Mary Ingalls Elementary Schools.
First of all, thank you for your time. My family and I are graduates of East Bank and Riverside High Schools, being a family of small business owners with higher education and remain in the Upper Kanawha Valley. The town of Chesapeake had a study completed recently regarding community development that stated the elementary school was rated as a high community asset. The school was recognized when local amenities were being discussed. The school was also noted as a public space for interaction. You have recently closed the doors just this year on Marmad Elementary, so what do you think will happen in the Upper Kanawha Valley? Will it be a destination for business growth and families or a ghost town? Millions of dollars have been poured into the development of other schools, some having a lesser number of students than those on the agenda. Also, East Bank Middle was centrally located to service the students, attending the entire student population that attends Riverside High School. I have maps I would like to provide for you as well. Please table these closures, assess the budget and expenditures of the board, provide a solid impact study of what will happen with these closures, assess schools consolidated for all aspects of test scores, graduation rates, attendance to higher education, the impact on sports programs limiting the number of students on the playing field, the expectancy of a higher percentage of children with disabilities in larger classrooms, the number and severity of disciplinary actions, and evaluate the states that are now deconsolidating to the negative impact. The closure of East Bank Middle alone is a large mistake as well as building a campus to house the largest elementary school in a rural part of the county. How many kids want to attend large campuses even as young adults entering college? Are you aware these kids live on narrow two-lane roads without sidewalks, catching the bus in the dark hours of the morning? Adults do not enjoy a one-to-one-and-a-half-hour ride to work, so what will be the impact on these kids' health and well-being? There also was no receiving hearing. The superintendent is preparing for his retirement with the push to close many schools, while these children and families are planning for their future. I am asking you to do what is right for these children and families and reevaluate the error-laden original proposals provided in the public hearings that have since been modified and vote against these closures. We have seen and heard the positive impacts this morning with one of your speakers that talked about the impact the schools have within the communities. So I really appreciate for you all to take this into consideration. Thank you for your time and I will be around if you have questions. And who may I give this map to? I would like to make sure that it is noted that this is the map that you see for the Upper Kanawha Valley. Right here in the center sits East Bank, which used to be a high school. So please take that in consideration.
Julie Gibson. Please make your way to the podium. She's a citizen, speaking to the issue of school closures.
I have just given packets for each of you that will corroborate everything I'm going to say. Hello, I am Julie Gibson, Principal at Fair Plains Elementary School in Wood County. I want to talk to you about Wood County's Board of Education decision to close Fair Plains Elementary at the end of this school year. The State Board of Education will vote on this decision in December. I know and appreciate the position of the West Virginia Board of Education to leave a lot of these decisions up to the local counties. However, when the county school system is having multiple problems, it is up to the State Board of Education to provide guidance to ensure the students and staff in the county continue to work to complete the educational process. I've been given two reasons why Fair Plains, my school, was targeted for closure. The first reason was declining enrollment in the county and high energy costs. Our school has only lost 50 students in the last 10 years. Fair Plains was built around 1950. It has not been afforded the updates the other schools in Wood County have received, such as new time and temperature-controlled HVA systems. The other schools have received new insulated windows. We have not received those either. So our energy costs are a little higher. The School Building Authority required physical building assessment by Pickering and Associates and they found that all areas of Fair Plains Elementary were at least ranked average except our boiler doors, which need replaced at a cost of $5,000, which our school community has agreed to fund. Then, it came out that another reason we are slated to close is because the county wants to use our current facility as a warehouse. I find it ridiculous that we recently sold a school that was closed a few years ago, McKinley Elementary, that was within a mile of the Board of Education office, and they sold it, but they didn't have the foresight to move their warehouse to this building. They sold it instead. I am extremely concerned that all of the schools that have been closed in Wood County the last 10 years have been Title I schools. My school is 87% low SES. We are the highest poverty school in the county. Numerous seminal studies have been completed on the benefits of low SES students achieving at a higher rate in small schools and in class sizes that are small. I understand the financial constraints we all face, but I think my students are worth a little more money for the hope of a small miracle that they continue into high school and graduate and even further their education. Wood County Schools is currently on the state watch list for finances and special education. The school that would absorb my students is on a comprehensive support and improvement and additional targeted support by the WVDE. The school is working to rectify their problems with special education, but why make it more difficult for them to get off the list? My students at Fair Plains with an IEP are achieving academically and showing academic growth. Please don't allow the county to slow the academic progress of my students. Please come and visit our school before you make your decision. Look at our facility. Talk to our staff. Listen to the stories of my students living in generational poverty. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Madeline Leggett, would you please make your way to the podium, representing the organization Westbrook, to speak on the issue of the Fair Plains closure. organization Westbrook, to speak on the issue of Fair Plains, of the Fair Plains closure?
Good morning. My name is Maddie Leggett. I stand here to voice my deep concerns regarding the proposed closure of Fair Plains Elementary. As a coach, mentor, and proud member of the community, I firmly believe that closing this school would have lasting negative consequences for our students, family, and the community as a whole. Fair Plains is not just a building, it's a cornerstone of this community. For years, it has been placed where children feel safe, supported, and encouraged to grow. It offers more than just education, it offers stability, comfort, and a sense of belonging. The smaller class sizes Fair Plains has, averaging about fifteen students per class, are a key part of what makes this school so special. Research consistently shows that smaller class sizes improve student performance, increase engagement, and allow teachers to give each children the individual attention they need. This is the environment where students thrive, where their potential is nurtured, and where they are more than just another face in a crowd. Disrupting this environment by moving students to a larger school would not only have detrimental effects on their academic progress, but also rob them of personal connections they've built with their teachers and peers. The teachers at Fair Plains know their children by name, by personality, and by need. They bond between them is real. It is built on trust. Taking these students out of that environment and placing them in an unfamiliar school, where neither the staff nor students that they know one another, would cause unnecessary emotional strain and disrupt their education. Furthermore, closing Fair Plains would affect our most vulnerable students, those who rely on stability and familiarity that a school like Fair Plains provides. Many of these children walk to school, sending them to school farther away would introduce new challenges. Families already struggling with transportation and resources, this could create an unbearable burden. Fair Plains is more than just a school, it is a family. Every child who walks through those doors is met with their teachers who genuinely care for their well-being, who make them feel valued and loved every single day. As a coach, I see the power of supportive environment firsthand. These children aren't just learning how to read or solve math problems, they're learning how to believe in themselves in a world where the pressures of social media and outside expectations are growing more intense. We can't afford to overlook the importance of safe, supported school environment. Relationships you create at a younger age and learning communication skills and how to express those with adults can make significant impact. During such a fragile time, it is critical to provide students with stability. Schools aren't just places for academic learning, they're social and emotional safety nets. The one thing I can say is kids don't have it easy. We want to jump and call their Generation Week and blame it all on social media, but who are we when we can't put students in classrooms with less than twenty-five kids? Where the teachers don't even have time to notice what is going on with their students, who realistically spend forty hours a week with these kids? Kids are facing challenges like never before, and we want to add academic strain on them with the added strain of mental health concerns. Though I don't have kids myself, the immense pressure students are facing is truly frightening. Children who come from difficult circumstances need all the love and support they can get. Many of them face challenges that go beyond academics, dealing with trauma, instability, or environments that make it hard to focus on their education. For these kids, school is often the one place where they can feel safe, valued, and supported. It's crucial that we create environments where they're surrounded and understanding and cared for, because for some, school may be the only consistent and positive spaces in their lives. Providing them with love, encouragement, and stability is not just important, it's essential for their well-being and future success. Thank you.
Maeve Cox, please make your way to the podium. She's a parent. Her topic is East Bank Middle School closing. Maeve, please.
I have a message from the East Bank Middle School, local school improvement council president, Jessie Kessler. She couldn't be here today. The financial plan outlined by the Kanawha County Board of Education does not align with a cost-effective delivery of education for our students. East Bank is the newer and larger facility with estimated renovation costs of $332,000. Dupont is the smaller of the two facilities by nearly eight thousand square feet and older by six years. Dupont also requires over four million dollars in renovations as it currently stands. This was documented in detail in the appendix of the original consolidation proposal as provided by the board for public review. It was questioned at the previous hearing where these numbers come from, as they didn't seem to be right. Dr. Williams indicated he wasn't even aware they were posted. There is also an estimated additional operating cost of roughly $1.9 million outlined in this document to maintain Dupont post-absorption of the East Bank students. These costs are not a prudent utilization of taxpayer or levy dollars that will result in the detriment of our children, not only academically by placing them in larger classrooms, but also from the overall well-being standpoint as well. The dollar amounts for sustainment projects that are first positive impacts to the children, such as the Cabin Creek Health Clinic, with physician and advanced practice providers on-site for student utilization, is not appreciated in this dollar amount. Beyond the dollar is the value of our children's education and investment in them as well-rounded, supported young adults, which we prioritize over any budget and should be the goal of every educator and operationalist of educational infrastructure. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eliza Payne, regarding school closures.
To begin, I requested to speak last today, as the previous time I was disparaged by an association president. It is intimidating to address this board without being criticized. It was inappropriate and bullying behavior. Last month's board meeting, Ms. Sullivan aptly pointed out her concern for closing schools across the state. Also noted that she, there was a substantial increase in the number of applications for the Hope Scholarship. Her questions were why, and are you looking for the answers? My first thought, I had spoken to you in June and listed twenty-seven instances of problems in Kanawha County schools, involving administrators, teachers, and students. This was after a state of emergency was called regarding Martinsburg North Middle School, with some of the same issues. Yet no one contacted me about any of it. My second thought, calls should be made to parents who recently applied for the Hope Scholarship to find out why they are pulling their children from public schools. As I mentioned in June, an administrator told me, "If I were offering a good product, we would not be concerned with homeschooling, charter schools, or the Hope Scholarship. Talking to parents will get you answers." I would also submit schools have become more focused on pushing agendas, hyper-sexualization of students, critical race theory, diversity, equity, and inclusion, gender identity, et cetera, woke-ism. On Election Day, I saw a book in an elementary school promoting racial division. Our books should promote unity. My hairdresser's daughter just scored miserably on the PSAT, yet for two years in high school she received straight A's. It's not a testing issue, she's been tested for two years, all A's. We have lost teaching the national pride and constitution, physical fitness, nutrition, life skills, morals, and more. We have lessened the focus on fundamentals. K-12 currently ranks forty-second in the country according to U.S. News and World Reports and forty-fifth according to PolitiFact. The association presidents would like you to believe it is all funding issue. There is never enough money. I pay over fifty percent of my personal property taxes to Kanawha County schools. This does not include the portion of my state and federal taxes that fund the school system. We are fourth in the highest in the country in expenditures per student on education. It is not a money problem, it is a process problem. Reevaluate how and where those tax dollars are spent and allocate them to the classroom, the teachers, and the students. It's time to find out about what is not working specifically and change it. It is time to trim the process. It is time to put Christian principles and morals back in the schools. It is time to implement strict discipline and adhere to it, unlike today, listening to people speak over their time. Own your responsibility, your successes and your mistakes. Bring West Virginia back to excellence in education.
Julie Gibson? Julie Gibson? Okay. All right. Adrian Stewart. Please make your way to the podium, representing Senator Stewart, and speaking to the issue of East Bank Middle School closure.
This is a message from Senator Mike Stewart. I urge reconsideration of the decision to close important community-based schools in Kanawha County. Consolidation is not the real answer to budgetary limitations in West Virginia public schools. While there may be short-term financial benefits in the long-term advice, the long-term adverse financial impact is not insubstantial. In addition, I intend to work with my Senate colleagues to close loopholes in the present school aid formula that wrongly rewards consolidation and warehousing of public school facilities. School consolidation often leads to larger, less personalized learning environments that can hinder student success and community engagement. Instead of further consolidating schools, a pilot program for deconsolidation would empower local communities, promote tailored educational experiences, and ensure more direct access to resources, fostering stronger connections between students, teachers, and families. Consolidating schools in West Virginia has been a failure resulting in large student-teacher ratios, decreased student performance and engagement, the weakened community ties. It is far past time that we accept that bigger is not always better, and that there are legitimate proven benefits across a variety of factors in smaller schools. Our goal should be the smallest schools in America. Thank you for your consideration.
Becky Basham? Please make your way to the podium. She is reading for delegate Rupee Phillips? Senator, excuse me, Rupee Phillips, regarding East Bank Middle School.
Senator Phillips said, "I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the recent decisions to close and consolidate schools within Kanawha County. While I fully understand that these decisions are driven by fiscal responsibility and the need to address funding issues, I must emphasize that we cannot lose sight of the primary reason our public schools exist, to serve the educational needs of our students. One of the most pressing issues arising from these closures is the potential negative impact on our students' academic process. Larger class sizes, a likely consequence of consolidation, constrain our educators' ability to give individual attention to students. As we all know, personal attention and a manageable class size are critical factors in fostering an environment where students can thrive academically. In addition to concerns about class sizes, the increased commute times for students must be taken into account. Longer travel times can lead to fatigue, less time for homework and extracurricular activities, and can even increase the risk of tardiness or absenteeism. For many families, this could further exacerbate existing challenges related to balancing work, transportation, and family responsibilities. These concerns are not merely theoretical, they represent real challenges for the families and students who will be most affected by these changes. It is crucial that we place the academic well-being of our students at the forefront of every decision made, particularly when it comes to something as significant as school closures. While I recognize that difficult financial decisions must be made, I urge the school board to explore all possible alternatives to minimize the impact on students. I believe that community involvement and open dialogue can help us find solutions that balance fiscal responsibility with the educational needs of our children. In conclusion, the primary goal of any school closure or consolidation should be to support the success of our students. We must carefully weigh the long-term academic and social costs of these decisions and ensure that we are not compromising the future of our children in the name of short-term savings. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to hearing your thoughts and working together to ensure that the students of Kanawha County continue to receive the high-quality education they deserve."
President White, there are no more delegations.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Of course, it was already amended, so item nine is not under consideration. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Wooton. All in favor, or any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, we had moved item F to the first item, the update on Martinsburg North Middle School, Berkeley County intervention. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, President White, members of the board, Superintendent Blatt. On Wednesday, April seventeen, twenty-twenty-four, a team of staff from the West Virginia Department of Education, Offices of District School Improvement, and Leadership Support visited Martinsburg North Middle School to conduct a targeted school environment assessment. The team witnessed concerning conditions, violations of code and policy at the school, and then in consultation with the Office of Accountability, the team concluded that extraordinary circumstances, as described in Policy Twenty-three, Twenty-two, existed at Martinsburg North in the areas of unsafe conditions, failure to provide high-quality educational opportunities, deficiencies in instructional leadership, among others. Team asserted that delaying action would not be in the best interest of students, and immediate action by the board, the state board that is, was necessary. Of course, the state board issued a state of emergency for Berkeley County schools. Subsequent to the state board action, Berkeley County Schools and the West Virginia Department of Education worked cohesively to design and implement corrective measures, and this work is ongoing. Mr. Gilliam, Ms. Massenopel, and myself visited Martinsburg North on September five. This included updates from Ms. Kleppner, who's present with us today as well, as Principal Pittsnagle, who's also present, and a tour of the building, which included classroom visits and interaction, excuse me, interactions with staff and students. And I think it's important to note that I did not witness any of those concerning conditions during that visit. I then met personally with Superintendent Sacks, President Long, and Vice President Power, all three are present as well today at the central office that same evening. My takeaways from that meeting were that Superintendent Sacks and his staff were executing a plan which addresses the concerning conditions observed last April. Additionally, Ms. Long and Ms. Power, board members, were fully supportive of Superintendent Sacks and this endeavor, the plan for improvement, and welcomed support from the West Virginia Department of Ed. Ultimately, they want what is best for student learning, and they expressed that continuously. I found it interesting that they both discussed, both board members discussed the shift in culture in the county unsolicited. Both noted that student learning and achievement seemed to be the topic of discussion among staff and community members across the county, especially since Superintendent Sacks's arrival. And mind you, this was not significant to just North, it was for all schools. They seemed also excited about the new energy and focus on curriculum and achievement. And I think we all, and I think I can speak for all four of us, I think we left that meeting with a shared, or in a shared positive headspace regarding Berkeley County schools and specifically North. Minus any questions from you all, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Massenopel, who's with our school improvement office. She's been our boots on the ground and working closely with the folks from Berkeley County Schools. Questions from me? Ms. Massenopel?
Good morning. My name is Kelly Massenopel. As Mr. Kelly mentioned, I am the school improvement coordinator that has been assigned to North Middle School, and I have been working with them since they were first identified in the fall of twenty-twenty-two as a comprehensive support and improvement school. He mentioned several of the things that happened this spring. After that visit on May eighth, or not visit, after the board meeting on May eighth, I worked very closely with Berkeley County District staff, with staff here, and we put together a comprehensive corrective action plan. And that corrective action plan included recommendations that we made in collaboration with them. That work is ongoing, and I'm really excited that Mrs. Kleppner, who is the executive director of secondary schools, and Mr. Pittsnagle, the new principal at Martinsburg North, is going, are both here to speak to you today a little bit about what has happened as far as those recommendations. I would also like to mention that we've also convened a school improvement team and a district improvement team since that- since that corrective action plan went into place. They are there to implement new practices, to give advice on new practices. We've also hired Kristin Tuttle. Kristin was the former superintendent of Morgan County Schools. She has been hired, she is there two to three days a week as a school improvement specialist, working with the staff there in the school building. We have also held a priority planning workshop. We took the plan apart. We did that with a school improvement team, the district improvement team, and they did a lot of great work with that information. As Mr. Kelly mentioned, I did travel with Mr. Kelly and Mr. Gilliam in September for a beginning-of-the-year meeting. The district's, the district staff was there. We talked about data improvement plans and other things. We also walked through the building. I will mention that overwhelmingly, I hear from teachers as I'm in the building that the culture has really changed since the last year. They feel very supported with respect to discipline. There is a focus on instruction and in learning. And next week, I will be back again to focus and work with the school on looking at school data and GSA data and planning for improvement in the area of instruction. And at this time, if you don't have any questions for me, I'd like to introduce Holly Kleppner, the Executive Director of Secondary Schools for Berkeley County.
Hi, good morning. As Kelly said, I'm Holly Kleppner, Executive Director for Secondary Schools. I was the acting principal beginning about mid-April until near the end of July, when Mr. Pittsnagle was appointed to that role. While I was there, I was more operational, policy and procedure, just trying to get things in order at North Middle School. And one of the first things that we noticed was the master schedule completely took it apart. Added, we took it down to two lunches. While students were at lunch, the other half of the students were in an enrichment intervention period, where they focused mainly on I-X, or it was I-XL, now it's I-ready. I keep forgetting. They're piloting I-ready this year. But that was a time where kids, students are getting the interventions they need. And if it was to catch up, or if it was actual enrichment, they might need some students that were in honors classes, we're trying to separate those students out and give them what they need. Also, we, ELA and reading were two separate courses at North. And per Policy twenty-five, ten, it states ELA and reading should actually be one period together. So we put those periods together and then took a reading intervention class and added it into our Unified Arts rotation. That is, the way it was, it is to be taught, it's like a young adult fiction class, very high-interest read. So students can work on their fluency, comprehension, vocabulary, but it's all types of readings that they want to read at that level. So that's been a good success so far this year. Also, noticed that the self-contained LD classes, we had nineteen self-contained classes. We got that down to six. So those are all co-taught classes, those students are included with the gen ed population. Also hired a full staff. They were not fully staffed when I arrived last year. This year, Mr. Pittsnagle has a full staff. I think we are down to just a handful of teachers that aren't in a program working towards certification, so that was a, that was a huge milestone. Moved about approximately twenty rooms around the building. We are piloting a STAR program that the State Department, that the State Department of Ed asked us to pilot with, I think there's four other schools in the state that are doing the same thing. So we had to move those classes around. Our, the technology integration specialist actually had a, her room was in a closet, got her her own room, so now she is during planning, instructing the teachers on how to use technology in the classroom. She's training them, a lot of PD that's going on there nearly every day. So just trying to make the building a little more manageable for everyone. Also, we took, there's a principal and three admin. We put all the assistants each in a wing, so there's a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade wing that has an assistant principal in it, and they are in charge of the discipline in that wing, as well as to be able to do walkthroughs and get into the classrooms. And that just gives teachers the support they need on the spot. So that, so far that is going very well as well. Also, we instituted Jostens Renaissance, which is a climate and culture program that is just, it is incentives for students as well as staff. So that is slowly being implemented, and I think the first major initiative just happened here at the end of the nine weeks. I think Mr. Pittsnagle will talk more about that. And then finally, we were able to hire an academic mentor for our new teachers. With the new staff, perm subs, first-year teachers, there's about thirty, which is almost half of the staff at North Middle School. And Mrs. Oldfield's works, goes into the classrooms, works with those teachers every single day, every period of the day, and just gives the support that they need, and she is just for North Middle School. So if you don't have any questions for me at this time, I will introduce Mr. Pittsnagle, our new principal.
All right. Good morning. I'm Mr. Pittsnagle. The biggest things since I was there in July is we came in and we looked at the discipline, the structure, the foundations of what we were doing. We started by just talking to the teachers, getting with them and understanding, they didn't have any idea how to put stuff in Wevis, which was the first thing. So we met with every teacher. We showed them the processes that we wanted to see, all the discipline within Wevis. We're not using any other platforms right now. So like even our classroom management stuff is kind of getting all put within the Wevis system, so it's able to be tracked, and it's able to be looked at, and we can look at all the data and kind of see what we need to focus on. And as we've seen that, we've seen that classroom management is one of our bigger issues. So we're building that foundation so that we can learn in the classroom. And as we do that, we're having conversations with teachers about classroom management and about what good classroom management is, and about how engaging classrooms can lead to better managed classrooms. So we're really focusing on discipline and just really holding kids accountable, holding teachers accountable to hold kids accountable, and that has led us to a lot of positives this year. We're still nowhere near where we need to be as far as day-to-day, but every day it's getting better. We get to have conversations with kids, we're visible in the classrooms, we're visible in the hallways. And we're doing everything we can to show the kids the positive aspects, and we're trying to change the perception. The perception of North historically has not been great. I'm from Martinsburg, born and raised, and I know that my first teaching position was actually at North Middle as a behavior-disordered teacher. So I have a lot of history within our area, and I understand it, and I think that there's a bad perception around North, and I don't think it's correct. I think if people get into schools and actually talk to the kids and see the kids, that the perception will change, and that's what we're trying to do on social media right now. We're getting out the positives that are happening on every day, so that people see that our kids are not the kids that they're made out to be, and they need to see that as well, because in order for them to change and to see the positives, they got to know that other people see the positives. So, and that's some of the things we're focused on right now. One other thing that I'll speak on as far as the Jostens Renaissance Program, we've implemented that. We've done a lot of cool things with staff recognitions, student recognitions, to get some more positive reinforcement within our school. We also, with our academic mentor, we just started peer-to-peer observations, which we feel has been hugely beneficial to our teachers. Like she said, we have thirty teachers that really need that support, and getting them in the classrooms where there's other teachers that that have been tenured, have great instructional practices, for them to see those things have been hugely beneficial to them, and we're starting to just see some of that, some of those kind of fruition. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you guys may have about some of the things that's happened throughout this school year so far.
Any questions, Mrs. Sullivan?
It is so refreshing to hear about the guts of what goes on in a school. You've really brought it to life, and to have the opportunity to, you've really had an opportunity that we don't often take in our schools, which is to sit back and really clear the decks and imagine what it could be. And you have done that, and yeah, I was particularly interested to hear about the master schedule, which is what rules a school. And the fact that you've looked at that and you've made changes in the class, I mean, it's just, it's remarkable what you've done in such a short time, so you're all to be congratulated. I wonder, how have the students been involved in suggesting changes that they might see?
Yeah, so our Jostens Renaissance Program is student-led, so we're meeting with them. They're given insight into some of the things they're seeing with their own students, their peers, as far as discipline procedures, as far as activities they would like to see throughout the school, whether good or bad, they're given their advice, and we're taking that into account when we meet to discuss some of those things.
Because they are, you know, they're the owners, in a sense, of the school. And so, so good that you're listening to them and encouraging them to speak up, and you're teaching them leadership skills at the same time, so you know, I've taken a lot of notes, and I won't go over, I could talk privately with you, but bravo. Thank you for transforming not a school, but lives. That's what we're all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, I will invite up our Superintendent Dr. Sacks to speak for a second as well, if nobody has any other questions.
Dr. Steinsberg? Thanks for everything you're doing for the school. It sounds like it's been a wonderful transformation. One of the striking things when we had originally voted for the intervention was the amount of fights that was going on in the school. The number was pretty staggering. I'm just wondering what you've done to address that and how you guys have been able to mitigate that issue.
Yeah, so I mean, middle school, I'm coming from high school, so but going into middle school, kids touch each other rather, rather often. So they're, we're working on those every day. We're having conversations with kids in hallways. One of the biggest things I've seen that's helped is visibility. We are everywhere and anywhere, all day. We're very rarely in our office, we're in the hallways, we're, so that negates some of those things. I'm not going to say we don't have some physical issues every once in a while, but I can tell you it's not every day, and it's not a consistent thing, and our kids understand that, and they're held accountable. All of our students, if they end up in a physical altercation, end up on a behavior contract, which states that we have a conversation with the parent, we have a conversation with the student, we set expectations from there forward that if there's any other issues like this, that they will be removed and sent to an alternative school. So that kind of puts it in perspective for the kids, for the parents, and it really sets the expectation. And for some of our kids, it's really held them back from having any other issues. So that's been a great thing for us to use as well.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
That leads to a question that I might have too, is what has the reaction been with the parents there and the community?
Yeah, so the parents have been great, and honestly, because I think we've had conversations with parents. We're talking to them, we're interacting with them, we're trying to get them involved. The more they're involved, the more accountability they're going to be able to take for their own kids. I have my own personal kids, and I know that the more I'm interacting with the school, the easier it will be if they want to have a conversation about an issue. So any issues we've called parents about, honestly, we haven't had any kickback from parents. They've been great to deal with. They understand when we set those expectations with the behavior contracts, that that's the next step, and that's kind of planting that seed for them to understand.
And you mentioned Jostens Renaissance Program again. How do you recognize teachers in that regard too?
Yeah, so. Yep, so during our last faculty meeting, we actually recognized eight teachers. We just, for different things that they're stepping out and stepping up for, and just kind of focusing. Every, every couple of weeks, we're trying to show that, like, we notice them. We've noticed all their efforts. We also have a magnificent teacher award that goes around week to week, where another teacher must nominate a different teacher in a different area. So it really gets them thinking about who's working in the school, who they're working with, and they must give us like a paragraph about that teacher, and then we put that on social media, we talk to, about the staff meetings. So it really is a focus on highlighting the positives.
Excellent. Yes, I join everyone else in congratulating you and the progress that you've made, and you're not the least bit intimidating, I'm sure, a middle school student.
No, you'd be surprised. Middle school students don't get too intimidated.
I'm not surprised at that. Dr. Sacks.
Thank you, President White, Superintendent Blatt, and state board members. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you all today and to introduce to you some of the team players here from Berkeley County. They don't know, I was going to ask them to do this, but I'd like to ask President Long and Vice President Power to join me side by side, if you don't mind. I know. They never, they never know what I'm going to pull. But the reason I wanted to ask these two board members to come up is, is that one of the things that, from a personal standpoint, that was a point of reflection that I constantly pray for is that the Lord puts the right people in the right place at the right time and in our path for what's best for our school district. And I can tell you without a doubt that the people that are behind me, Mr. Pittsnagle, Ms. Kleppner, Ms. Power, Ms. Long, the entire Board of Education, and the principals, the teachers, the service personnel in Berkeley County, they're the right people in the right place at the right time. And we have a focus in Berkeley County, which is that we are united, and I think that this collective group is united in making sure that we're doing what's best for students. We also have adopted a mantra, which is from the boardroom to the classroom, everything that we focus on is for the betterment of our students. And so again, it's having the right people in the right place. And working with this board has been wonderful. The vision that they have set forward to making sure that Berkeley County Schools is positioned to make sure that every single student is the best opportunity to learn and be successful, to walk across the graduation stage with the skills necessary to be successful, that we're empowering our teachers, that we are supporting our teachers. Mr. Pittsnagle talked about the Renaissance Program, which is helping student voice in building culture within the school. But it's also about what he is doing as a leader in the school to make sure that not only are the teachers supported, to ensure that there's high-quality instruction, but that there's accountability for instruction as well. And so I appreciate his leadership, and he has had full permission to Pittsnoggle anybody to just stand in his way, so. So thank you again, and if there's any questions that I can help answer, I'd be happy to do so.
Mr. Hurst.
Thank you, Madam President. Ryan, I want to commend you and your fine staff. As everyone knows, back when this issue was brought to our attention last year, I was very critical, almost to the point I offended some of my friends that didn't mean to do so. But I'll be honest with you, as critical as I was then, I want to be that complimentary now, because you owned the problem, you recognized the problem, and you're well on your way to fixing the problem. And if we would do that collectively more in public education, we wouldn't have to fight the battles we have to fight across the way right now. Public education's under attack. Mickey said it earlier. We want to do what's best for our children, provide the best opportunities. I've known you a long time. I think Berkeley County's got a Jim, a good man. I think you've got a guy here at this school, and I wish I could clone six, nine principals around the state. I can't do that. I think you're getting it right. Like Ms. Sullivan said, it's refreshing to see this. It's, it warms my heart that we are well on our way to seeing major success stories there, and I commend all you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you, the state board and Superintendent Blatt. Your team has been phenomenal in this, in this process. I talked about the right people, it's also about the right people from the department helping us as well, so the support has been truly appreciated.
What is the enrollment of the school? I don't know the background on it.
I'm going to have him come up. He can speak much more articulately than I can on that, so.
Yeah, we currently have right around six hundred students. As far as diversity rates, I mean, we're low-income. Free and reduced lunches and breakfasts. But yeah, that's.
Well, I think you're doing a great job, and I'm just happy to hear all of this. This sounds good, really good.
And if you, if any of you are ever in Berkeley County, which I know is a little far from here, more than happy to have. far from here, more than happy to have you stop by and visit the school and, and walk around and see the kids.
Well, I know that you have a great supporter in Ms. Tuttle as well. Having worked with her before, that she's a great resource, and I'm happy that you, you're taking advantage of that.
Yes, they, they've been awesome. All the support, honestly, from, from Kristin to Kelly, to Jeff, everybody's been great. And, and from our board office down, it's, it's been awesome. There's been no lack of support at all. It's been awesome.
Pretty soon you'll be the model of middle schools in West Virginia, right?
That's right.
Thank you all. Any more questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I think I'm going to ask for a necessary break for 10 minutes. We will return at 11:41.
Thank you very much. We're back in session at 11:42 and the next item on the agenda is the amendment of the Canal County's 2020-2030 Comprehensive Educational Facilities Plan. Call on Minka and Dr. Williams.
Good morning, President White, Vice President Gabriel, Superintendent Blatt. As you know, with the CEFP amendment, it is just the planning phase of things. It's not an approval of the actual closures or anything like that. It's just their, their planning document. I did want to mention if it's okay, just a little bit about school planning and, and some of the challenges with that before letting Dr. Williams talk. Managing school facilities is really kind of an uphill battle from the get-go. It's a difficult thing at, at its best. Like, it can be really challenging. And you really need to look, project out, you know, 10, 20 years to be properly planning for a county because the last thing you want to happen is to have a, well, I'll just call it like a facilities cliff where you get to the point where all your bills are due at once. You have to, you know, look at your facilities and know when things are needed to be replaced, repaired, and maintained. If, and you do this to keep from hitting the cliff because if you hit that wall or that drop-off, that's when educational services, you know, are, are hurt or impacted. So you, you try to maintain like just that steady push to keep your facilities maintained. And you do that through aligning buildings to their current and projected usage and, and need. You align them to the current resources, what you have now and then what you have in the future, what you project to have in the future. You also align it to what the safety and educational and accessibility needs you have now and in the future. So what looks maybe great now might not be looked in great, you know, 30 years from now. So you, you kind of balance all that to, to have a facilities plan. To paint a quick picture, the average age of Western Virginia schools is 50 years old, which, just a side note, isn't very good. Like, that's, that's quite old. And the average age of the schools that are being talked about foreclosure this year throughout the state is about 63. And that includes Canals. They're in that same average age. I know, you know, facility age doesn't tell the whole picture, but it's a, it's a good indicator of, you know, when things need to, to move or maybe make some upgrades. This kind of puts public school districts at a critical point of making decisions, you know, about facility inventories that are, is best for the counties in the future, now and in the future. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that again. It's been a while since we've talked about CFPs, just to let you know kind of that planning thing and, and that importance. So with that said, I'm going to talk about Canal CEFP amendment. So Policy 6200 requires all local boards of education to submit amendments to the CFPs to this board and the school building authority. Canal County Board of Education requests approval to revise its 2030 CFP to include a change in their project priority list and additional mergers and consolidations. It's being proposed as a top priority that Bell Elementary Schools, Malden Elementary Schools, Mary Ingalls Elementary School, and Midland Trail Elementary Schools be consolidated into a new Eastern Canal County Elementary School. And that is pending successful application to the SBA and then the completion of that, construction of that school. Also amending to it would be the closure and merger of McKinley Middle School into Hayes Middle School and the closure and merger of East Bank Middle into DuPont Middle School. And those would occur at the end of the 24, 25 school year. I believe Dr. Williams is here to make some presentations about the, all the closures contained in the CEFP.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlow. President White, Superintendent Blatt, members of the board. My name is Tom Williams and I'm superintendent with Canal County Schools. As many of you know, Canal County Schools' population has decreased in the last 11 years counting this year now. We've lost 5,000 students, including 320 from last year to this year, which will equate to another 39 positions we'll lose at the end of this school year. That equates to 500 over the last 11 years and approximately $30 million in funding from the state. Our schools are funded based on student population, and as student population decreases, then our funding decreases. And so we have to make some decisions. Canal County Schools has been very good with budgeting and we have been able to absorb large losses, cutting deeply, without cutting deeply in the schools or programs. In the, in the past two years, we have closed four schools and five buildings without significant cost. We were able to combine those students from one building to another. However, with the continued loss of students, we are at the point now where we cannot continue to cut positions without also merging and consolidating schools. When making these difficult decisions, and they are difficult, not only for me but for our board, for mergers or consolidations, I had to first look at schools where this could occur without significant additional costs to the district. The two schools where this could occur are East Bank and McKinley. They were selected because they are, there are schools nearby that can accept these students without additional renovations or things that the building will need additions. I now will go through, I provided you all with some information in a pocket, and I can go through each school if that's what you would like for me to do, or I don't know how you want me to proceed.
Yes, if you would, just review each school. Thank you.
All right. East Bank into DuPont Middle. The utilization of East Bank is currently at 30.2% utilization rate versus DuPont's at 54.3. Fewer students are affected by transferring from East Bank into DuPont. And the, the utilization of DuPont at the, at the consolidation would be 85.3% after the merger, which is what our SBA and the state likes to see around the 85% utilization rate. East Bank has decreased 132 students over the past 10 years, and the projection is they will lose another 84 students in the next 10 years. DuPont has increased 46 students, but that's largely due to the absorption of Cedar Grove Middle, which was closed three, two years ago. We kept the, the grade school part of the building, but we absorbed the middle school kids into DuPont. DuPont has a projected decrease of 134 students over the next 10 years. From last year to this year, East Bank students, East Bank went down 10 students, or they currently have a total of 227 students as of our second month report. And that's how we're funded, based on the number of our second month report. DuPont sits on more acres than would have space to grow. East Bank Middle is in the 100-year FEMA floodplain. There are foundation issues in the gymnasium area and other areas of the school that would make it cheaper to tear the building down than to repair the damage. Transportation, we've looked at all of the bus routing and we've made some changes in routing to address concerns. I had Dr. Potter ride every route for the schools in the eastern end of the county. The information that was discussed earlier is erroneous. It is on, it, it was old information. As we've lost students, the number of stops have decreased on those routes. Also, one of the routes, we were going to Fayette County to pick up some of the Fayette County kids that were coming to us. From now on, Fayette County will bring them to our closest bus stop rather than us going and picking them up. So we have made changes. I think we're only over on one route by two minutes, and we would save approximately $1.2 million annually. We had 25 speakers at the hearing, 11 community members, six parents, five staff, and three students. So the majority of the speakers were either staff or student, or, excuse me, staff or community members. The mayor of East Bank has contacted us about using the building for some of the possible recreational issues. They would like Calvert Field, they would also like the baseball softball field, and they would like to be able to find a way to utilize the gymnasium for sport, sporting activities in the East Bank area. But we also plan on using the building, if consolidation goes through, we plan on using the building for storage and things for that end of the county for maintenance. Any questions on East Bank?
Any questions on that information so far? Yes, sir?
I have one question. Did you take a look at, at the reverse of this? You know, what would be the benefits or the burdens if you merged DuPont into East Bank?
We did.
Notwithstanding the, the capex needed for the building?
We did look at that, and it would be more students to transport because there are more students at DuPont. Also, with it being in the 100-year FEMA floodplain, that was a concern as well.
So what, I mean, notwithstanding that, what were the transportation times? What was the building utilization? Those kinds of things, just as a side-by-side comparison?
Okay, the building utilization, I provided you all with this on, on the sheet here. The building utilization for East Bank is 30.2%, and for DuPont, it's 54.3 utilization rate, and a combined building will be an 85.3 utilization rate.
Yeah, so my question is, if you reversed that, what would be the new utilization at East Bank if you brought those students from DuPont? Or did you look at that?
I don't have that information.
Wouldn't it be the same?
Well, the building's bigger, so it would be a little different.
Any other questions for Dr. Williams?
I, oh.
Yes.
I have a, a process question first. Are we going to look at all these schools under this discussion? Okay, then, yes, I, I have some. You, you talk and others talk about utilization rate. And that's 25 children per classroom? Is, is that what we're talking about?
We take the number of students and divide it by the square, and divide it by the number of students the building was built for.
Okay. Now, these schools were built years ago, 50, 60 years ago? And, and this applies to all of your, all of your school closures-
Yes, ma'am.
-that I'm asking about. Are we, and this is an opinion thing, are we using outdated metrics to discover what utilization is anymore? What kids could do in the 50s and 60s and how they behaved in school and what their needs were and their parent support and, and the whole thing is different from, from what we have today. And this, I realize, you're not setting the utilization rate.
Correct. And I agree with your statement because schools are expected to do so much more now. We have so many more special ed programs so that we can help more students, and those take up space as well. And then just the whole process of school has changed in the last 50, 60 years.
Yeah. So, so that utilization rate is perhaps something that we should be, not we, but the SBA or somebody should be looking at and perhaps transform it. Right now, the, you know, you have a small school and a somewhat larger school that'll be combining. The, it, it will have a low SES rate, which both of those schools had, and the special education rate, from what I can tell, would be about 21%, which is, I think, about the average in, in counties across the state. What will you be doing ahead of time to blend these two school communities together before this, this transformation would take place?
We've spoken with the principals at DuPont and East Bank, as well as Hayes and McKinley, and they will have activities through the rest of this year where they bring students to the new, the, the school. East Bank students would go to DuPont, have joint activities, things they can do together, bring the parents in so the parents become familiar with the school as well. That's what we plan on doing between now and then. Also, it was mentioned at one of the meetings, talking about the history of East Bank. And I, at the time, it occurred to me, and I remember when Charleston High Stonewall consolidated in the Capitol, they have trophy cases that they would bring Stonewall and Charleston High things together. So I think that would be something they could do at DuPont as well to honor the East Bank accomplishments over the past several years.
And, and we know that sports are so important to young people. Of course, when you have two schools, you have two varsity football teams and two varsity basketball teams. So that's diminished when you have just one. So they, these two schools will now have one varsity football, one this, one that. So how do you, you know, what are your thoughts on, what can you do to counteract that, to get students involved in lots of things?
Well, intermurals is a big thing. Also, we have the, the ability to have junior varsity, sixth grade team, junior varsity teams, where kids can work to earn a spot on the varsity team. I know in soccer, which is huge in, in many areas, they have several JV teams at some of, some of the schools. So those are some of the things. I think intermurals are big.
Good.
I know we did that when I was principal at a high school, so.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, for mentioning the, the relationship between this discussion and, and the future items that we're going to be considering, because this relates to the next three decisions that we're going to be making, the next three items on the agenda. So you may want to consider asking any questions during this discussion so that we can have-
I do have one more with this. How many full-time counselors will you be having and other support staff in this combined school?
Right now, with the initial numbers we've received from federal programs, this will be a Title I school. DuPont will be a Title I school. And, and as an aside, the medical, Cabin Creek Medical has, will also be going to DuPont. But it would be Title I, so they, they will have Title I staff they can utilize, but we would have a counselor and a nurse. And one of the things we did in our recent levy is we added additional counselors and additional nurses in the excess levy for some of our larger schools. We also have the Communities in Schools program, thank you, Mrs. Justice, in several of our schools. And I think that would be an excellent place to have a Communities in School person to help bring all of the services that are available to families-
Thank you.
-in that area.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions before we proceed to the next one? Thank you.
McKinley Middle School into Hayes, this was a difficult one because my wife and two kids went to McKinley, so I got to hear it at the meeting and I also got to hear it at home. The schools are six and a half miles roughly apart. Most kids play on the same Little League teams as well as other community activities. The utilization rates for both schools are roughly the same, 56, 57% at both schools. It would be 86.5% at Hayes. Both schools are within the city limits of St. Albans, and the Hayes site is slightly larger by about an acre. The McKinley student population has decreased by 80 students over the last 10 years and is expected to decrease by another 97 over the next 10. Hayes Middle School has decreased by 38 and is expected to lose another 69. From last year to this year, McKinley went down 600, or, excuse me, 34 students for a total of 255 students. The main part of McKinley, when we had segregated schools, this was a black school in St. Albans. It was built in 1932. The original part of the building is the center part, and the limestone is crumbling, and it's just, it's, it's not in good shape. It would cost, again, more to, it would be cheaper to tear the building down rather than to, to fix the issues that they have. There was one route over 45 minutes, and it's currently a route that goes to Hayes anyway. It's the Dry Ridge Route, and that route already goes to Hayes. We also would be getting rid of a portable at McKinley and save approximately 651,000 a year. At McKinley, there were 14 speakers, five community speakers, four parents, three staff members, and two students. Plans for the building could be sold or donated to a 5013C, but also, we have plans as a county, maybe to do some consolidation of possible bus garages into one location. That's something that's on the table for discussion. It could be done there.
Questions? Mrs. Sullivan?
Hayes, as I recall, has one road in.
Strawberry Road.
Yeah. And it's along Coal River, as I recall. Does that present any challenges or concerns to you? It seems like it's a long way, maybe it's just because that road is so narrow.
It is. And there are plans, I was told by one of our delegates at the hearing in St. Albans, to, to widen some of that. That's what I was told. But when I was principal at St. Albans, I had kids come and go on Strawberry all the time. It does flood periodically, not any great extent where we had to cancel school or do anything like that, meaning Strawberry Road, not the school. We have a breezeway there between the two buildings. We are enclosing that. We have already received the, we have funding to do that. We've already had the architectural plans drawn, and we hope to have that completed before school starts. So it, students will not walk outside from one building to the other. They'll go, it'll be all inside.
Well, and that brings up the whole question of security. Does Hayes already have a man trap and other security features?
No, but in our recent excess levy, the citizens of Canal County voted on, every school will have a man trap. We'll be doing those. And Mr. Crawford back there gets two. He's our facilities person. He'll be designing those for each of our buildings. And so all of our schools, at the end of the five-year levy, will have safe, safe school entrance.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, our new proposed elementary school, we've proposed, proposed combining four elementary schools into one Eastern End Canal County school. The student population is estimated to be at approximately 600. It would be a pre-K5, fully accessible, barrier-free, single-story facility on a 10, little over 10-acre lot that we already own. It was the site of the former DuPont Junior High many, many years ago. That building has already been torn down and the land is flat, if you can believe we have flat land. There will be adequate staff and parent visitor parking. We'll have off, off-road bus loading and separate parent pickup areas and all the, the things that a new school can enjoy. I don't know, I know Mrs. White was at Clendenon, but when we just opened Clendenon this year, but it'll be similar to what we were able to provide the kids at Clendenon. We've asked the SBA, or we've submitted our plan for the SBA, and next week, I'll go to the SBA and discuss it somewhat, and then we'll know in December. We, they, we're asking for 20 and we'll provide 10 million of the funding for that building. The first school in the consolidation plan for that would be Bell Elementary. It's three miles from the proposed new building. It has a 72% utilization rate. The new elementary school would have an 85% utilization rate. From last year to this year, they went down 23 students for a total of 255 students. The school was built in 1953 with additions in '71 and '79, and it sits on 1.4 acres. The current building is multi-story, and there's not enough parking. There's no off-site loading and unloading of buses and no parent drop-off areas. At the hearing, we had 17 speakers, seven grand, seven parents or grandparents, six community members, and four staff members spoke at the, at the hearing.
Any questions regarding this Bell Elementary closure proposal?
I would have questions, but it would be about all, all of these elementaries consolidating, so I'll, I'll wait.
Well, we'll pause then at the end of the third.
Okay. Malden Elementary is 2.8 miles from the new proposed building. It has a 54% utilization rate. Last year, from last year to this year, they're down 11 students. They have a total of 160 students. The school was built in '53 with additions in '61 and '69. It sits on about an acre and a third. Bus loading uses the city streets, and it's not separated from traffic. The same is true for parent loading and unloading. The longest travel time for this building would be 34 minutes, and we were able to look at our runs again. When Dr. Potter went on, on the bus runs, we were able to, to look at those. And we have a new bus, now, we have a, a new route that will be going and picking kids up, so that will be cutting some time off. We're also, we'll avoid a 10-minute wait where, where one bus was waiting on another bus for 10 minutes. We're able to get that corrected as well. The hearing, we had two speakers, and they were two community members. Actually, I was told at Malden, by folks at Malden, why would we want to go to a meeting when we want a new school? So that's what, that's what they said. Mary Ingalls is seven and a half miles from the proposed new building. It sits up Campbell's Creek. It has 45.2% utilization rate. From last year to this year, they went down six students for a total of 143 students. Again, it was built in '53 with additions in '57 and '61. It sits on two acres. There's no separate loading or from vehicular traffic, no adequate parking or separate student pickup. The one major route that is over on time is the longest route that runs all of Campbell's Creek, and it is 31 minutes. At the hearing, we had six speakers, three community members, two staff members, two signed up, but one gave their time away to speak, and one parent. We are open for discussion on the building, but I have been contacted by the church next door that would like to have the building. Midland Trail is 5.3 miles away from the proposed new school. The building utilization rate is 55.4. From last year to this year, they lost six students. They have a total of 158 as of second month. The school was built in '67. It's no additions, sits on 8.2 acres, and it's backed right up to Riverside High School. There are some mold issues in the radiator drain pans, and the school is not sprinkled. And it does not have ADA accessible bathrooms. And we also would be able to get rid of a portable there as well. There's one route over on the recommended, and it would be 34 minutes from the Shulian area. We had 19 speakers, nine staff, five student, five, excuse me, five parents and five community members. We were asked, the current DuPont, the old DuPont site where we want to build the new school- school is used by youth soccer. And we had two speakers at one of the meetings, I, I don't recall which one, but two speakers asked if there would be something we could do or provide them some area where the youth soccer could continue. And I think this would be a good site for that. If the building were torn down, then we would still own the land, and the community could use that property for the youth soccer program. It is, it's strong in that area of the county.
All right, now we can entertain discussion, questions?
Thank, thank you. Thank you for your, your explanation. It's no secret that I, I like community schools. So that being said, and the research on smaller schools is pretty definitive, and I understand why you're doing this, you know, why, but what can you do to make a large school have a small school feel to it and impact?
As Mr. Pitsnagle spoke earlier, I was principal of the large school. We had almost eleven-hundred when I was principal there, and you are able to make a large school feel like a small school. It's all about relationships. It's relationships with kids. It's being in the hallway. It's talking to kids. It's going into classrooms, and I've been known to go through a history classroom and perhaps point out an answer on a test to a student at one point or another. Never in a math classroom would I do that, but in a history class, I, I have been known to do that. But i- it's communication and things of that nature. That's how you make, that's how you make a larger school a smaller school. I think our Communities in Schools program is excellent. I think our counselors do a wonderful job bringing kids together. It's about listening to what kids want and, and doing the best you can with what you have.
Have you looked at a school within, or schools within a school model at all?
We haven't looked at that yet. We're still in the planning stages of this. Edgewood and Clendenon Elementaries, we have the pod sections, you know, where kids work in pods together, and then they have their own classrooms. So that's one of the things that we're thinking about. Nothing is set in stone, because until we know that the funding's available, I don't want to get too far down the road with planning.
The, looking at the, the range in, in school sizes, you know, you have a very small hundred-forty-eight to two-hundred-and-seventy-seven or thereabout, so it's going to be a large school. But also, the, I, I looked at the academic proficiency rates and how they vary from school, from elementary school to elementary school. Twenty-one percent in one school, up to sixty percent, sixty percent proficient in reading in another school. Twenty-seven percent in math compared to sixty-two percent in, in, in math in another school. So what impact do you think this disparity will have on students in a consolidated school?
Well, again, this would be Title I, and some of these schools are, one year they're Title I, one year they're not. One year they're Title I, one year they're not. So we give support, we take it. We give, we take it. Just all depends on the numbers that, the, the dollars that we get from the feds. But I think a clear focus, a clear, principals have to be in the classroom, they have to see what's going on. We have to make sure we're, we're using, we're following the state's standards. We have to make sure that technology has its place, but nothing ever replaces a teacher. So I think all of those things combined, it's what works best for kids and gives them the best education possible.
And I appreciate your saying something about technology, because too often, children are just engrossed in their, their little iPads all day long at school.
And they don't need to be.
And that, they, that should not be happening. The, the questions I have now, President White, really have to do with the CEFP and, and that kind of thing. And I absolutely understand how declining enrollment affects your finances. And, you know, that not only are we losing some folks in the state just moving out, but we're also losing children who are in the state. So I want to ask you some specific questions about Canal County. Charter schools affect your enrollment.
Yes, ma'am.
And I recognize that in Canal County, there is one brick-and-mortar charter school, and that is the one, the nursing program at Bridge Valley. And it only has maybe thirty, thirty-two students who, you know, would be juniors and seniors. But there are virtual charter schools in the state, and those are run by for-profit entities. Do you know how many children from Canal County are enrolled in charter virtual schools?
Charter ver, or virtual program for us is, is our largest school.
Yeah, okay.
But the charter program, I can tell you that the last time I checked, two or three weeks ago, we had twelve-hundred-and-eighty-four students receiving the Hope Scholarship. Now, I don't know, there's no way for us to know how many of those students previously were in a private or a, a private school. But I'm not sure on the number of virtual, because our virtual program, we have eleven-hundred kids in our virtual program from kindergarten, or first through twelfth grade.
But that's the county.
That's our program. That's correct. That's correct.
And charter school pupils, as I understand, and here I'll look to the lawyer, do, are not eligible for Hope Scholarships, correct?
No, they.
No, they're not, no. So we have the charter school issue that affects your school, your public schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Right?
Yes, ma'am.
Then we have the Hope Scholarship. And do you know how many Hope Scholarships are being offered to Canal County children?
I know that we have twelve-hundred-and-eighty-four that we have entered into, into the system, because they have to send us a notice of intent, an NOI, and then our social worker inputs those into the system, and we had twelve-hundred-and-eighty-four two or three weeks ago.
Okay. Now, there's a, a, a part of the Hope Scholarship information process where children can dual-enroll in public school programs. If they're not already, you know, if they're in a private school, they're homeschooled, they're micro-schooled, they can enroll in your program for forty-five days, and then they can withdraw from your program.
Yes, ma'am.
And become eligible for the Hope Scholarship. Do you know, you know, I, I remember reading back when, earlier in the, the school year when you were saying that Canal County added so many students. I don't remember the number, just overall. How many students did you lose after forty-five days who then became Hope Scholars?
I would say probably three-hundred, because it, the Hope has been building, and every year, another grade level gets, gets added. Next year, they won't have to do the forty-five day, it's my understanding. They will no longer have to do the forty-five day. They can automatically get the Hope. So there's no way of, the positive is, we got to count those students on our second month report.
Right.
The negative is, next year, when we won't have them, our numbers are going to drop even more, because that sort of propped us up this year. We only, we only lost three-hundred-and-twenty, whereas the year before, we lost four-hundred-and-eighty-four.
And that forty-five days, of course, is dependent on when a school, a county school district opens its doors. So you opened yours on maybe August eighteenth.
Uh-huh.
Other counties in the state opened earlier.
And then they don't get to count those.
So, so they don't get to count those students in their, in their report, correct?
That's correct.
So it's, there's a lot going on that is decimating, and I, you know, I'm just going to put it out there, decimating public schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And you would probably have maybe different ideas. Maybe you'd suggest building two schools instead of one consolidated, if you had money.
Yes, ma'am.
So money is, is the prime motivator, and it's very gut-wrenching to see our schools have to close in the state.
I agree, and, you know, those hearings that we had were horrible, and for weeks after, even though there hasn't been that long, it's traumatic. It's traumatic on us to listen to the assaults. We were threatened by various communities. We had to have plainclothes policemen interspersed in the audience, as well as dressed policemen. It's, it's, it's frightening, and it's sad. And it's sad for the kids, because who wouldn't want a small school for their kids to go to? All of us would. But I, I have a duty, and this is the part of the job where people say, you hate kids, all you care about's money, but I haven't been doing this for forty years because I hate kids. I've been doing this because I love kids, and I want to see them have the best education they can get. And unfortunately, I'm only given X amount of dollars to do that with, and I have to make that work so that we can have teachers, we can have counselors, we can have school psychologists, we can have speech therapists, nurses, above the funding formula. School nurses are one for fifteen-hundred. We do much better than that in Canal County. So those are some of the things that we have to look at when we're making these plans.
And if you were just to throw caution to the wind and go into the hole financially, what would happen to Canal County schools? What, what, what would be the?
Well, first of all, you all would be having a heart attack, because you'd have to take us over. And financially, I mean, we employ roughly between thirty-five-hundred and thirty-eight-hundred folks in Canal County. So if we're not able to pay those salaries, those folks go to our grocery stores, to, you know, to the, to the movies, to everything, doctors, and if they don't get a paycheck, they can't do it. And so many of them live paycheck to paycheck, it's difficult, as enough as it is. So if we would go under, as one of the largest employers in Canal County, it would be devastating. Yes, it would be.
Yeah. And the, the funding formula, of course, we're not in charge of the funding formula.
No, ma'am.
There is no poverty index, there is no special ed whatever. Back in the day, it seems to me that special ed children counted as three.
Three to one.
Three to one.
Not any longer.
So that, that's not anymore.
No, ma'am.
So there have been some, some severe alterations in the, in the funding formula.
Yes, ma'am.
So hopefully our legislators.
But that's a federal, that was a federal.
That was a federal thing, yes. But here in the state, I, I'm hoping that our legislators are, 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 are really looking at what can be done to support our public schools and to put money into them, because over ninety percent of West Virginia school-aged children are attending public schools, and I, I looked that up, I researched that. And, and, and that's going to be, that's the future.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the future of our state, our leaders, our, our business people, our teachers, our parents. So we need to be putting our money on the horses that are, are going to have to run. So, you know, again, I, 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 I'm heartsick for the children, for the families, for the staff, but I understand why you're doing it.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Tom, thanks for coming up here. This is, these are tough times, and it's, it's unfortunate it's come to this, but for the people from East Bank here, I appreciate you all coming today. I want to be upfront and honest with each one of you all. I can provide you little to no comfort today. I'd be lying to you if I told you I could, and I don't think you deserve that. I think you deserve the truth. And the truth is basically this: We have two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand students in the state of West Virginia in public schools. Six-hundred-and-thirty-eight schools, fifty-one percent occupancy. We've lost four-thousand students statewide last year alone. And I do find it troubling that a couple of letters were read earlier by two friends of mine, two former colleagues. I'm a former state senator myself. I served over there in that chamber. And they say they want smaller schools. We all want smaller schools. I'm a former three-term board member for Logan County Schools. Mr. Wooton is a two-term member. Between us, we've probably set through twenty, twenty-five closure hearings. Guess who wins in a closure hearing? No one. But it rings hollow to me when legislators go, and I'm going to probably offend two of my friends, but when they go in the paper and they send letters here and say they want smaller schools, well, guess what, ladies and gentlemen? They have the ability to effectuate the change. They've got, I had red and green buttons in front of my seat. I voted on bills that affect the constituents, the community, the population. But for them to say, hey, I want smaller schools, then change the funding formula. We swore our hand and raised our right arm like Ms. Justice did a while ago to uphold the Constitution of this state and do what the law prescribes us to do. That code book says we are to operate in a certain manner, and we're trying to do that. Is it fair to all communities? No, it's not. It's grossly unfair. Children lose, communities lose, but it's not fair for people in elected positions to go and mess with people's livelihoods and say, I want one thing, and then do the polar opposite. That's not fair. I said public education's under attack, I mean it. The Hope Scholarship in this state has turned into the No Hope Scholarship, because they have created class warfare in public education. If you take two working family members, those are the two kids that make sure their child has food to eat that evening. Those are the two people that sit home and try to make sure those children do their homework that evening, that they have a bath and have clean clothes and a bed to sleep in. They're the ones that are exercising and utilizing the school choice and the Hope Scholarship, and God bless them, I'm okay with that. But what about the person who works in a single-family home, or comes from a broken home, or has no home? They can't provide the two things that public education provides that Hope Scholarship parents can afford, and that's transportation to and from school and lunch for them to eat during the course of the day. So has Hope Scholarship turned into Hope? Yeah, for about ten percent of the population. See how many of our special needs children are actually doing the Hope Scholarship? And I want to qualify and quantitate right now. I am not against the Hope Scholarship. I don't have a problem with that. I think school choice, that's a person's prerogative. I'm okay with that. I've got family members that have utilized it. I want to be full disclosure. But make it fair and equitable for all people. Factor in the ones that can't afford these things, and if they want to have school choice, give them that school choice, too. We are hemorrhaging population loss in public schools. It's going to get worse. I'm sorry I cannot provide you any comfort today, but I owe you the truth, and that's what I want to try to do. I want to thank you all for coming and standing up for your community. That's what you're supposed to do. And I wished I had a different outcome and a different answer, but I don't. All I have is the Code of West Virginia to go by, and right now, the funding formula for public education is severely flawed. Thank you for your time.
Are we allowed to speak? I have been in your shoes. I understand the formula so well, and have experienced this so many times. It is so many things affecting our student enrollment that's draining them out, but they don't come from one classroom or one grade level. They come from all over, and then what it causes you to have to do is to eliminate positions, eliminate teachers, eliminate service personnel. And the only recourse you have is to do more economies of scale and bring the kids together, because we all know that it's, it's so difficult. This is probably the hardest decisions that we ever make, are decisions such as this. Any other questions before we vote on the CEFP?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for being here. I know this is tough. I certainly appreciate y'all's due diligence and the hard work that you put in, making these decisions for the students and parents here in Canal County. Trying to look on the bright side a little bit, can you speak a little bit to the new proposed elementary school and the types of facilities, personnel, you know, benefits to the students that will be part of that new school that they may not have in their current school? Are there going to be new programs, new, new types of classrooms, new technologies available in this school that may not be available currently?
One of the things that we have discussed is, as I talked about, Clendenon and Edgewood is our, where the, where the students come together in a large area and do group work. is our, where the students come together in a large area and do group work, group projects and things of that nature, project-based learning. And then for the individual, they go into a smaller classroom with a teacher when they need one-on-one help with reading instruction and things of that nature. Of course, there are music programs, there may be possibly an elementary band program that they could have, there are art, there are all kinds of different programming things that they can have, as well as, and I was asked about counseling at the new school in one of the hearings, and we paid for additional counselors at our larger schools through the last excess levy. The next excess levy, well, this school wouldn't open until the earliest would be twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So we would be able to have another excess levy before then that could possibly put in, in that levy call, an extra counselor, a communities and schools person, a psychologist on site, perhaps a full-time nurse, things of that nature. Also, full-time PE, and, you know, those are some of the areas that, plus we'll be able to concentrate and focus, excuse me, we'll be able to focus our resources into one area rather than spreading them out into four different areas.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Another thing to, oh, sorry. Can I ask this? I'm not really familiar with all the schools in Canal County. I've been to several of them, but not all of them. Are the kids that go from one school to another school that are consolidated, like three different schools, when these three different schools come together economically or socially, are these going to be the same? Are they the same group of kids?
Probably economically, they will be. You know, DuPont, East Bank's always had a big rivalry. But I think once the kids are always okay, the kids always do well with one another. It's the adults on the outside that cause some of the issues, but the kids always do well. And I think we'll be able to bring those together. I can speak more knowledgeably about St. Albans because I lived there for thirty years. Those kids are on the same intermural, or, excuse me, midget league teams, same soccer teams, basketball, Little Red Dragons, all of that stuff. They're all doing that together anyway.
Okay, but are, like, if they come to school and this school is a little bit more affluent than the school that's coming in?
No, ma'am.
Can you tell the difference? I mean, are, is someone going to have really nice stuff, someone not have very much stuff, or not have lunch money?
I don't see this. All of the kids in Canal County eat free anyway, breakfast and lunch.
Right.
But I don't see that as being an issue with the schools that we're talking about.
Yeah, I just use that as an example. But just to look at them, you know...
Shouldn't be an issue. I don't foresee it being an issue.
Okay.
Something else that's lacking always is the ability to raise funds for capital improvement. I know the school aid formula has no, no effect on that at all. And the maintenance line item or step is catching up a little bit with reimbursement, but it's lacking in any kind of inflation rate adjustment and those kinds of things. So your choice is to try to pass a bond, ask your voters to tax themselves greater, which fails a number of times, or to go to the SBA. And of course, those of us that have served on the SBA know that the requests are...
Limited funds.
Twenty times more than the funds we have available to award. So it's just difficult every way you look at it. Any further questions, discussions, comments? Yes, sir.
Couple real quick. Can you clear up, there's been discussion about, this is on East Bank, DuPont. You're not going to have any one-way bus routes that exceed how many minutes?
We will have the East Bank, we have one at forty-seven minutes, and forty-five minutes for middle school.
Okay. At forty-five is the recommendation?
Is a recommendation, that's correct.
Okay. And then on your new, new elementary school, what are you thinking about student population going forward? You have six hundred kids projected being there. Is it going to grow? Or how are you thinking about that?
It's possible it could grow if new industry would come into the area. It's always possible for our schools to grow. It seems like a lot of the big companies that come to West Virginia, they don't come to Canal County. They go where there's more flat land because we have very little of that here. So it's going to take new industry. And I know our legislature works on that, trying to bring in new jobs, but it's difficult.
So your estimated utilization rate, and I know that's kicked around a lot, I'm not sure it actually means anything, but it's a marker. It's a goal. At eighty-five percent, have you built in enough flexibility?
The school would, for the elementary school, the plan is to build it for seven hundred.
Correct.
Just to have a little leeway.
Yeah, because six hundred elementary kids in, like, a single site, I would think you'd need larger classrooms, a little more room, so they can expend that extra energy they bring to school. So, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the Canal County Board of Education's request to amend their 2020-2030 Comprehensive Educational Facilities Plan?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Gabriel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rotruck. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the closure of Bell Elementary School, Mary Ingalls Elementary School, Malden Elementary School, and Midland Trail Elementary School.
The Canal County Education respectfully requests approval for the closure of Bell Elementary School, Mary Ingalls Elementary School, Malden Elementary School, and Midland Trail Elementary School, and their consolidation into the proposed new Eastern Canal County Elementary Center. This closure is contingent upon receiving funds from the SBA and the completion of the new school. The consolidation of these schools will enable Canal County to operate their schools more efficiently. In consideration of these closures, applicable West Virginia Board of Education policies were reviewed and followed. Documents were available for public inspection for the required amount of time. Enclosure hearings were held for Bell Elementary School on October fifteenth, Mary Ingalls on October seventeenth, Malden on October twenty-first, and Midland Trail Elementary on October twenty-second. Canal County Board of Education voted to approve these closures at the conclusion of each of those respective hearings.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the closure of East Bank Middle School. Mr. Whitlow.
The Canal County Board of Education respectfully requests approval for the closure of East Bank Middle School and its merger into DuPont Middle School. This closure is not contingent on any other actions and is proposed to occur at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Regarding this closure, applicable West Virginia Board of Education policies were reviewed and followed. Documents were available for public inspection for the required amount of time. An enclosure hearing was held for East Bank Middle School on October eighth. The receiving hearing for DuPont Middle School is also held on October eighth at the conclusion of that East Bank hearing. The Canal County Board of Education voted to approve this closure and consolidation at the conclusion of the October eighth hearings.
Is there a motion that the closure... Mr. Wooton, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunleavy, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the closure of McKinley Middle School. Mr. Whitlow.
The Canal County Board of Education respectfully requests approval for the closure of McKinley Middle School and its merger into Hayes Middle School. This closure is not contingent on any other action and is proposed to occur at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Regarding this closure, applicable West Virginia Board of Education policies were reviewed and followed. Documents were available for public inspection for the required time. An enclosure hearing was held for McKinley Middle School on October ninth. The receiving hearing for Hayes Middle School was also held on October ninth, and the Canal County Board of Education approved this closure at the conclusion of those hearings.
Is there a motion that the closure of McKinley Middle School and its merger into Hayes Middle School be approved?
Certainly.
Moved by Mr. Dunleavy.
Second.
Second by Dr. Stansberry. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I would like to make a statement in regard to our actions that we have taken today in this time of decreasing student enrollment in public schools throughout most districts in our state. County Boards of Education are having to make very, very difficult decisions. School closures are an unfortunate reality for our communities and what they're facing. The connection between the community and a school represents a special relationship. Everyone on the state board understands this. I'm certain that everyone on the local school boards understand this as well and feels the pain associated with school closures. We know that keeping schools open when they are only partially filled draws money and resources away from our students. As a retired school treasurer with thirty-six years in West Virginia School Business Affairs, I have seen firsthand the struggles associated with balancing county budgets in the face of decreasing enrollment. No one wants to make these decisions to close schools, but counties are required by law to carry balanced budgets. As the State Board of Education, we come from areas where closures and consolidations have occurred and have affected communities and families that we care about. Sometimes they hit very close to home and affect our families directly. No one is immune. Today is difficult, it's painful, but it's necessary. Counties cannot sustain operating at previous capacities while losing two, three, four thousand students from its public schools, and that is what's happening. In the 2022-23 school year, there were more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand students in our public schools. This year, there's a little over two-hundred-and-forty-thousand. So that's a loss of nearly ten thousand students in three years. It's difficult to adjust to this type of loss. However, it is something that our counties are working to address each and every day. So we recognize the struggle that you're facing, and we empathize with you as well. However, we must support actions to provide secure and sustainable financial footing for our education systems. It's necessary and essential to protecting the learning environment while meeting the ever-increasing needs of our children in our public schools. And I think at this time, we will take another break for lunch, for about thirty minutes. We will return at one fifteen. I hope that was okay, because I need to... I hope that was okay, because I need to...
Don't hit it so hard. Last time, not be able to hear.
I think I scared myself.
I'm not sure.
Call this meeting back to order at 1:17. The next item on the agenda are the West Virginia Board of Education Personnel Matters. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the West Virginia Department of Education Personnel Matters. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Wooten, second. By Mr. Hardesty. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is an appointment of a member to fill an unexpired term as a member of the School Building Authority of West Virginia. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Dunn Levy to the SBA and fill the unexpired term of former-member Dr. Snively, which would be ending September 4th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Wooten, second by Mr. Gabriel. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Department reports. Superintendent Black?
Thank you. The only report that we have today is on the enrollment. We've mentioned that several times today about the declining enrollments and the things that we're seeing across the state. But we do have the certified numbers from the October collection. We have 241,024 students, and that's down 4,023 from last school year. 23,320 professional staff, and then 629 public schools, which is down eight from last school year. If the trajectory continues in the work that Micah Whitlow's been doing with our counties, we're looking at a possible 26 school closures for this school year due to the enrollment and the funding that we're facing. We also have 10,174 students that have received the HOPE scholarship.
Could you repeat that thing?
Yes, 10,174.
And do you know how much that differs from the last?
Do you know how much that differs from last year?
I can check, but I know it's like double, at least.
Double, yeah.
We have 24,502 homeschool students. 12,766 non-public school students.
Do you know how many of those non-public students attend accredited versus unaccredited schools?
I could check with Mr. Lambert and see if we can pull that data.
Okay, because I think that's important.
Yes.
Because there's a huge difference between what accredited schools offer versus non-accredited.
Yes.
I hate to interrupt, because I know you're in the middle of your presentation.
Oh, no, no, that's just the information.
Madam Superintendent, but how many classrooms do we have now where there are non-certified teachers?
That was my next one. So we have 1,523 certified teachers, but teaching outside of their content area.
Yeah, they're certified.
Right.
They're not certified in the area.
Correct.
That's down a little bit from last year, wasn't it?
Yes.
Did we say 1,700?
Mm-hmm.
So it is down a little bit.
Yes, it's down a little bit. Of course, there's been several initiatives that have been, you know, from the state and then also in our counties. But then we also, you know, had a lot of people in extra positions with the COVID funding as well.
Don't even turn this mic on.
Yeah, because we're streaming.
You know, have we looked at any possibility, and I'm saying this before the legislative session begins, to entice some of those kids that are out there that graduate from high school, the possibility of maybe giving them some sort of a tuition break or something if they would sign some sort of a contract to, once they become teachers, to work in the state-supported schools? Maybe give them, you know, a little bit off, give them two years of free tuition in the school if they sign a contract to work five years in the school system? That would ease the burden of their finances. I'm just throwing that out there. We need to find some way to really entice kids to go into education. They're not doing it as much as they used to.
It worked in medicine, Vic. It's a good, I mean, it has definitely worked with physicians being retained in the state for a period of time.
Didn't save my daughter's tuition, I can tell you that, when she was in medicine. But can we? I had read an article recently where certain higher ed institutions were discouraging people from taking that as a career path. I think I read that the other day. You know, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the starting salary for a teacher is somewhere between 35,000 and 38,000? Is that about right?
We're up to 45, yeah, 44,000.
Oh, is it up that high now?
With the latest increase, yes.
Okay, I stand corrected.
The only thing we currently, well, there's two, of course, the Grow Your Own program with the money that was put in for the dual enrollment classes. If the students are in there, they can pretty much complete their first two years of college in high school and get that paid for. And then we've worked on funding, of course, for those teacher residencies and that work that the students can do while they're taking the courses. And then they transitioned several years ago, that Underwood Smith Scholarship Fund for Teaching scholarships to, it actually funds 25 teachers a year, and they got the funding put back in that this past year toward the end of the session.
Question from Michelle on the homeschool. Do we know how many of those completed the proper assessments?
We are working on that data. We had sent back out again, and our counties have been working. I don't have the numbers right here in front of me, but for the initial deadline, we had a nice percentage, like in the 70s for elementary, and then we dropped down to like the 40s for middle school, and then down barely into the double digits for those 11th grade students that completed the assessments. Dustin Lambert, that leads that work and then works with our attendance directors as well, did say that there had been some more assessments come in, as we've told counties that they have to reach out, collect those, and if not, file those petitions about revoking the homeschool privilege. And he said there also had, counties had seen some students return to public school when they reached out about the assessments that they didn't have provided.
May I follow up on Paul's question? With homeschool and HOPE scholarships, there is a hidden cost to the counties in that they have to process all these things. And when, you know, somebody's applying for a HOPE scholarship, the county has to apply for a WEVUS number for, I mean, I got three pages, single-spaced, from a county telling me all the things they had to do. So my question is, and I asked them, do you get any money for all this administrative cost? And the answer is no, they get nothing. So it's taking an inordinate amount of time away from their own public school students to process HOPE scholarships and the homeschool follow-up. So that's another thing to add to the list of suggestions to our legislators.
Yeah, but the tracking that's just been tied to school choice that our counties are having to do for those reasons, plus, you know, in and out of the virtual charters, the public charters, there's been a, you know, I think we could have a full-time staff in every county, I think, just to manage the tracking and the reporting requirements that county boards have for these school choice options.
I agree, because I have seen the interaction between counties when they're billing each other for these students that transfer in and out, and in and out of their county to somewhere else, or charter and back to public school. And of course, the homeschool issue that you have is you don't know where to place these students, because you don't know what grade level they've accomplished.
Right.
So of course, I'm sure a parent's upset when they think their child is a fourth grader and then a teacher or administrator says no, you know? That, I'm sure, is a huge issue.
I have a question, Madam President. It's perhaps as best addressed to counsel. The constitutional requirement the legislature provides for a thorough and efficient system of free schools, in terms of all these other types of schools, what does that now mean?
Well, you guys are aware that when the HOPE scholarship litigation was ongoing, one of the questions in that lawsuit was whether the legislature could actually fund something outside of the public school system, or whether that constitutional provision should be interpreted as meaning that the only thing the legislature can do is fund the public education. And ultimately, the Supreme Court said they can fund another system of schools, but their primary responsibility is still the public schools regarding, because of that constitutional provision. They can't do it to the detriment of public education. And I guess at some point, that's going to be the next frontier, the next question that's going to be decided. Yeah.
Everyone should have the new snapshot card. I know a lot of us rely on those when we're going places. On the back of it, you also have just the division of the other schools that we have in addition to the 629 elementary, middle, and high with our CTE centers, alternative ed, et cetera.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have a question for Superintendent Black? Next item on the agenda is the board member updates and requests for information. For your benefit, Mrs. Justice, this is the area where if you want future information discussed at a board meeting, that's where you would ask for it, and also report something that you have been involved in, that you're always involved in communities and schools, for sure. But we'll start over here, and then you can see examples. Mr. Woo?
Thank you. You mentioned the trajectory showing 26, potential 26 school closures in the state, which is like roughly one every two counties. But is it more clustered in certain areas? How are you viewing that? And if you don't have that answer now, we could have it at the next meeting.
Yes, I can get that for you.
Yes, I can get that for you. I mean, of course, Canow County has the largest number, but there's also a significant reconstructuring that we're going to be looking at probably December, January in Randolph County.
Right.
I know there's one in Greenbrier, Clay County's considering additional ones. So I think other than Canow County, most of them are more of our rural counties.
Okay.
Was Wood County one we were hearing from today?
Yeah, Wood County, yes.
Airplanes. We had two speakers on that.
Then on the student population decline, it's at two forty. You said we've lost roughly ten thousand, give or take?
Yeah, we've lost four thousand since last year.
Since last year. And so is it solely attributed to non-public school enrollment on the incline or is something else? Is it just coupled with general population?
Yeah, I think coupled with general population loss. I think there's, you know, we've been on this trajectory downward just due to the demographics of the state. But now that we've added in these other choices of school choice, it's just kind of made that number jump a little more than had been predicted.
Thank you, that's all.
Dr. Stansberry.
Thank you, Madam President. Had a chance to go to the Charleston Veterans Day Parade on Monday, and it was a fantastic parade, lots of good folks from the community, middle school, no, just high school bands, I believe, represented from multiple high schools here in Canow County, so that was great. I went because my son was in the JROTC unit from George Washington High School. They have a ton of kids in that unit, and it was fantastic to see them all dressed up and marching down the road there. Great program at GW. They have, I think, eight periods of JROTC class throughout the day, so they have a ton of kids in that program. It'd be nice at some point to hear from, I don't know who's in charge of the JROTC statewide, but who could sort of report to, you know, the status of the program and if there are more schools that are starting programs or, you know, is it on the incline, the decline? It's a fantastic thing for introducing discipline and everything else into young people. We've seen a remarkable, you know, change in our son over the last three years, as long as he's been in it. So just love to find out some more information about that and if there are other things we could do to help, you know, spread that program throughout the state if it's not in all fifty-five counties.
Absolutely. I'll get with Clinton Birch and his division, and they can provide us some data. Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you. I attended a Communities and Schools Advisory Council Planning Meeting and also attended the Military Compact Signing that three of us attended the other day, which was remarkable. And I had the opportunity to interview finalists for the United States Senate Youth Program, and there were six juniors and seniors from across the state, and they were inspirational, so articulate, so smart. I mean, coming from the South, the Eastern, all over. And so that was wonderful. And I also participated in a Veterans Day Program at Rock Branch Elementary, which is in the corner of Putnam County over there. And I happened to run into the Assistant Superintendent, and I just want to share with you something that I took to be such good news. And I love to go to that little school. It's always such a bright, well-run place. But I learned about the county's work giving students with disabilities access to grade level content and vocabulary, because if you don't expose them, the gap just gets bigger. I was just so impressed. So two years ago, the Rock Branch principal and the special education teacher there and the director of exceptional ed looked at each student's, each special education student's file, and every time, they asked the same question, and it was, can this student be served in the general education environment with accommodations and supports? And just a little about the school, the school's poverty index is fifty-eight percent, and that's seventeen points higher than Putnam County as a whole, so it's a pocket. The general summative assessment, which is what everybody takes, really tells a tale. In the general education population at Rock Branch, nearly eighty percent of Rock Branch third graders were proficient or above in reading and math, and the fourth and fifth graders were close to that. When you look at the outcomes for the special education students at Rock Branch who were taking the general summative assessment, in math, over forty-eight percent met proficiency, and of those, twenty-two percent exceeded proficiency. And then in, in reading, fifty-two percent met proficiency with almost fifteen percent exceeding. So there, I mean, I just think this is good news, and we should be sharing good news. And so I just wanted to recognize their good news and just say that the Putnam County Board is behind this, the superintendent, the staff, everybody, the students, they all deserve recognition. And I know we have more bright spots. I look at the data from all the schools, we have incredibly bright spots throughout the state. We just don't hear about them all the time, so there's that.
And Rock Branch is where our Teacher of the Year is, starting in January, Mr. Schalls.
And I think the department is going to have a little clip of him among others on, you know, with him leading the student, I mean, he's marching around and the kids are all, it's marvelous. The other thing I want to thank you for, Superintendent Black, because I've been asking about it before you were superintendent, so we got it. The math performance on the SAT. And as I expected, and I'm sure many of you too, students, remember, this is the test all juniors have to take, but if they don't have the math background, they're not going to do well on it. But yet, this is the test that we are required to use to determine math proficiency. So when you look at it, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-six students who took the test did, you know, poorly. They, you know, ten, well, maybe ten percent were proficient. But when you look at the kids who are taking pre-calculus, trig, calculus, ninety percent almost for those who were proficient if they were in calculus, fifty-seven percent if they were in pre-cal. So the test, you know, it's something I've felt, and you know this, is not the one we should be using. And I know that you're not choosing it. I recognize that. But maybe there's some altern, but this proves the point. So thank you. And also, I would ask that perhaps, I noticed we haven't been getting reports from the deaf and blind school the last couple months, so maybe we could be getting those again and maybe even inviting the superintendent up there to come and give us a presentation on what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I had the privilege of speaking at the Keystone Space Collaborative Conference in Pittsburgh a couple weeks ago. It was kicked off by Senator Capito. It's a collaboration between Ohio, Pennsylvania, and West Virginia to try to be part of the space economy, which we've always been. Catherine Johnson and Chuck Yeager, and you go down the list of notables, but there's so much opportunity. JP Morgan, Goldman Sachs, go down the list. It's one point five to one point eight trillion-dollar economy that lay above us. So much opportunity for kids. The whole concern up there of all three states was workforce, workforce, workforce. And save for the fact that yesterday was a very busy day, I had the Midwest Microelectronics Institute coming over here. They called us because they are desperate for talent to fill the intel-related jobs that are coming to those fab plants, and we're trying to figure out what kind of part of the supply chain can we get in our state. I just think that maybe part of the overture to the legislature has to be driven by economic development, because thanks to, you know, Governor Justice and the legislature and local economic development, we've gotten a lot of opportunity in this state. But if we're going to make good on it long-term, our kids are going to have to be able to be educated early on, not get behind, and we've got to do a lot better job. Or those jobs are all along the Ohio River, they'll be filled with people from elsewhere. I'd like to see our kids get the first best chance. And therefore, I guess, I guess, I know that's what we all want to see accomplished. I would ask you, Superintendent Black, if there's a chance we could get a matrix put together, I'd like to see all the schooling options in the state and some of the real key metrics on, you know, success and achievement. It would be interesting to be able to look at one snapshot and see everything that's going on in education in the state and the alternatives to public education. Because I can't see it right now, I don't see a snapshot. Is that possible?
I'm not sure of what you're asking.
You know, a matrix that shows how many public school students we have, how many private school, how many homeschool, and then we see some metrics indicating the results of what we all want to see is career and college-ready and all those other things, success, how they're doing, how they compare.
Right, and well, unfortunately, we don't have any data on a lot of those outside.
Can we get it? I mean, because there's so much of what they, they still depend on the department to do certain things, is that not true?
No, no, you're, it's correct.
Then we should have data. We should have data about this.
But when.
Without data, we can't know what we're doing.
But when our students lead the public school system, then we're not required or allowed to collect data from certain populations.
Of course, we are able or should be able to collect data on our own graduates who are not, you know, in CTE, they talk about what they're doing after the employment, whatever, you know, threes. But we don't have that for our general education students, and surely there must be a way.
I think I'll have to double-check with Tim Konzett and Joey Wiseman, but I think that was either when they did the online PEP plan this time around.
Funny you should mention that, because I was just reading an article the other day that, I think this is happening in Indiana. No one believes that the purpose of education is to ensure students perform well on math and reading tests. Yet for too long, we've used these outcomes as proxies for the impact in public education. But in recent years, they've shown a better approach in possible tracking and reporting life outcome metrics, such as income and employment five years after high school. So, you know, if we can start focusing on that and see how well our kids are doing in the future, because honestly, probably when I was graduated from high school, everybody was ready to leave. You know, everybody was ready to leave West Virginia. I was just ready to leave Grafton, but I didn't go anywhere. But, you know, that's the kind of talk that high school seniors get, but if there is employment opportunities, and they are there.
It's a stunning.
And what better impact on economy than educated students ready to join the workforce, pay taxes, raise families? Mr. Hardesty. Mrs. Justice?
I just.
Put your microphone on.
Yesterday, I was at an elementary school in Lewisburg, and Randall Reed Smith, through, I don't know what organization it was or something, donated a lot of books to the county library and to the elementary school that was nearby. So we read to the children in first grade, two first grade classes. They were really inspired to read and got their own book, and, you know, it was just a great sight to see the smiles on their faces, and they were so proud of it and everything. And I just encourage you, if you haven't been into the schools, the elementary schools and the high schools, go and just see the students. I mean, they're great, they're great kids. A lot of future, a lot of, they just need a little bit of help, you know, so it's great. It's just a good thing, really good thing. Thank you.
Mr. Dunlevy.
Well, next Monday and Tuesday, Victor and I will be spending some time together, going, listening to all these presentations for the SBA, and that's always interesting because you hear all the ones, we don't have a lot to give. Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. I should say Victor and Paul and I. I apologize. Paul's kind of a small guy. But that's what we'll be doing Monday and Tuesday, and then Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be, something I was working on the last, we all have been working on one thing, be careful, but the SSSE is quite a problem right now, so we're going to be on that Wednesday and Thursday. That's all right. I'm not doing anything. Anyway, so that'll be fun. We'll be tied up with that. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Gabriel.
Really don't have anything. Nancy and I went to the WVASA for two days. The second day was really good because there was a lady talking about workman's compensation, and it was a very enlightening presentation, very enlightening presentation about accidents that occur on school grounds and employee accidents and, you know, the whole nine yards. But it was really good. I appreciated that presentation.
Thank you very much. Yes, you've covered anything I was going to report, obviously, but the superintendent's, you know, what a fantastic group, hard-working people, and their professional development series that they do is close by, so Mr. Gabriel and I are easily can warm our way. No, we are invited every time. But they, the professional developments on the personnel season, and Dr. Heston from Marion County presented on that. And it is such a difficult, difficult thing to do when personnel has to be reduced, RIFs, transfers, and those kinds of things. But the advice that she provided was just perfect, because here's this window of maybe two months in the year that you have to make these difficult decisions, you know? Don't let that tarnish everything else that happens so good the rest of the year.
She did a great job.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I couldn't be more proud of the work that the Common Ground Compact does. Just, it gives me, chokes me up, I guess, is what I got to say. My little patriotic emotions kind of come to the top. But Robert and what he has pulled together and the many, many, many outreach groups that come together to support our military families and help our students who are interested in enlistment being one of their E's after graduation, just kudos to them. And I just love a man in uniform anyway, so. Next regular meeting of the Board of Education is December 11th here in Charleston, West Virginia. With no other business to come before us, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I say something real quick? Thank you all for accepting me. I really, really appreciate this. Thank you all.
Moved by Mr. Wood and seconded by Dr. Stansberry. I would assume there's no discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all, thank you all.